He'll tell you today, the surgeon, well, he didn't think they were going to get that infection that he had to you. So.
Must have slammed it in there in a heart.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So we. He had this one little spot that wouldn't heal. They had done a major skin graft and they left a little spot. We had a little spot like this that they had a skin graft and it just wouldn't give us an healing. So he had a hernia came, a little hernia came back. The doc says, we can't wait on this one. We had a. So we'll see you the sixth of January here. So we were talking about the sixth of January and they found two abscesses underneath it. So that was evidently why it wouldn't give up.
Which hospital?
Boston General. So this is. They did, they did follow whatnot, said, I don't. And I'm taking days and. Sent them pictures and gone back and went with them. Cause they've got the major surgeon, then we've got the head wound, skin graft surgeon now.
Right. Probably infection diseases.
Yeah, yeah.
I was giving myself a chance to protect.
Oh, wow.
Uh, for a couple of months.
And so, um, the last, within the last thing we went down. Little circle, the doctor said, he's quite a character. There's a, had this thing, nurses and I said, we have mad, that's us big. The doctor said, I think you're just as good.
Ah, good.
So.
You're dogging me.
I said, I think, well, I've seen it since day one.
Sure.
And I think. So I think we've got a deal.
What started this whole thing?
Went in for a simple hernia fix, it's two, five, twelve, fifteen. So that he'd be ready when he recovers. And that was to attack the same basket and he did end up involving that time. To, and to ship him down for blood clotting. No, it was blood clotting. And he never, and he never blood clotted until that one. Then he went all over, he went all these years and then he had eight falls in nineteen, four nerves and a gallbladder issue. So we ended up down, we were confident, we walked out. And we went over, we were like, oh, we need to go to Boston. With all this guy tissue. So we went down, started all off.
So they removed the gallbladder?
Yep.
Were they able to do it through putaniously?
They had to open it. Cause of all this guy tissue. So that's how we met up with the head surgeon down there. It was very great.
It's nice when we get somebody.
Yeah, and it's nice he's stuck with him, he's got virtual, they've got pictures. They've been really good about this.
Well, can you take care of me? I had a good voice meeting at church. Uh, nobody gave me the answer.
Well, they, they wanted to do the gallbladder the next day. It seems unlikely. We don't think so.
Hold the fog.
So he's looking pretty soon. August. Body cells, cool, have more toys.
He's not orphac right now for God.
He tried to try.
That's all right. I will tell you though, when I was riding back when I was a kid. Three times. I should have asked her my question.
Oh.
We only kids, one was in the playground, she said, oh, where is he? Lady went this way, I went this way.
Yep.
I hit like a rock, skimmy across water. An amazing thing. And a couple of times orange.
Yeah.
I'd be yelling, we're running, we'd stumble at something. Yes, over a teakell.
Yeah.
And again, I'm, I'm very lucky.
Yeah.
So I had that experience. Do you?
Yeah.
How many?
We got three. This way, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes, yes, got a guy down in our friend. Was at Daffrow and then went over to his class. Working on our.
Long.
Oh, yeah.
I remember that.
He's, 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 he's. Right, yeah.
I don't, I don't want to hear that thing. Yeah, I should call it a closed call.
I bought it. Oh, I don't. There's, there's, that work.
I got some beautiful tinsel. Looked up like.
Yeah. Still got the old one.
Yeah, I know. I used to use the ripper. I did have a side. But I was using one truck. And that was important. Oh, you gotta have. You brought it up.
I got a snack bag.
Those are the good old days.
Yeah.
Off.
Yeah, 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 I know, I would, we had a birthday that we're all celebrating on this weekend.
Yeah.
Yes, Tiffany. We'll be home soon. Cake soon.
Yeah. We'll see what happens. Good to see you.
Yeah.
My place tomorrow as well.
Yeah, we are.
Good.
Yeah, very. Very. So, how do you know?
Yeah, we're talking nine oh four. I'd like to call the Barnstead Town Meeting to order. Will you join me in the presence of the.
In the flag.
To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, united by the universal liberty and justice for all.
Next time we can make it. We'll start off with the election results.
Can't hear you.
Okay, is that better?
No.
No? Okay, he's, he's doing volume. Is this better? Okay. I'll try it with your jet. So unofficial ballot annual town election, Barnstead, New Hampshire, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Selectmen. Three years, vote for not more than two, Gary Madden, two hundred ten votes. Richard Carrion, one hundred fifty-eight votes. Priscilla T D, one hundred ninety-two votes. Gary Madden and Priscilla T D were elected. Planning Board, three years, vote for not more than two. Erin Stone, two hundred sixteen votes. Timothy E, two hundred twenty-four votes. Tess Ballenport, seventy-eight write-in votes. Erin Stone and Timothy E were elected. Budget Committee, three years, vote for not more than two. Andrew Sylvester, two hundred forty-two. Alan Glassman, two hundred fifty-five. Both were elected. Road Agent, three years, vote for not more than one. George Drew, two hundred ninety-nine votes. He was reelected. Treasurer, two years, vote for not more than one. Hillary Henry, two hundred seventy votes. She was elected. Library Trustee, three years, vote for not more than one. Anne Swick, two hundred eighty-seven votes. She was reelected. Trustee of trust fund, three years, vote for not more than one. Karen Montgomery, two hundred eighty-three votes, she was reelected. Overseer of Public Welfare, one year, vote for not more than one. Elaine Swinford, two hundred sixty-seven votes, she was reelected. We had one zoning question and it's written in your town report, so I'm just going to read you the results. Yes, two hundred fourteen. No, fifty-eight, zoning question passed. On the official ballot for the annual school election. School, school district moderator, one year, vote for not more than one. John Savage, fifty-three, write-in votes. He will be your next school moderator. School District Clerk, one year, vote for not more than one. Timothy E, two hundred sixty-three votes. He was elected. School District Treasurer, one year, vote for not more than one. Hillary Henry, two hundred seventy-four votes. School Board, three years, vote for not more than two. Erin Emery, one twenty-three. Kevin Janest, ninety-seven. Brandy Palatier, one hundred sixty-four. Lila Atkins, one hundred fifty-three. Brandy Palatier and Lila Atkins were elected. So those of you that are in the room that were elected, it's time to take your oath of office. So please rise and raise your hand. So I state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely swear. And affirm. That I will bear faith and true allegiance. To the United States of America. And the state of New Hampshire. And will support the Constitution thereof. So help you God. I state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely swear. And affirm. That I faithfully. And impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As state your office. For in terms of how many years you were elected for. According to the best of my abilities. Agreeably to the rules and regulations. Of this constitution. And the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help you God. Okay. In terms of the. Everybody that was sworn in. Please see Jesse Feifield at the end of the meeting to sign their papers.
Sound is still very poor. If it's me, let me know with a vote. But I, you know, this, the sound is poor. There's nothing coming out of the speaker up here.
How's that? Is that better?
No.
The IT guy isn't here.
That's a tad better.
It's cranked all the way. There are seats up there. Just a reminder to everyone, no smoking on school property. At this time, I would like to introduce the select board. And the administration and the town clerk. So we'll start on my right with Ed Tasker. Paula Penny, Gary Madden. Richard Carrion. Diane Byer, are your select board. Karen Montgomery is town administrator and Jesse Feifield is town clerk. So, um. Also, I'm going to remind you again, you need a voting card in order to vote. The assistant moderator for today is. Hillary Henry. So, that's good. Be nice to her. Just a reminder to be patient with the people who are in line ahead of you that are at the mic. When at the mic, state your name. Everything goes through the moderator, no debating amongst yourselves. No negative motion. Only two amendments. Per article at a time. Table cannot be used to kill, only put off for later in the meeting. To call the question requires a two-thirds vote. Secret ballot requires five registered voters present before the debate is over. And you can call point of order if you disagree with the moderator. So. And I, just to let you know. For those of you that have looked at town report for years, there's a different format. And this is the format that is required by D R A. Not as easy to read, I'll tell you that. There's a couple of typos and as we get to them in the, um. Meeting, I would, I would point them out to you. Everything we thought was fixed and it wasn't. Human error, I guess. So, Article One, to choose town officers and vote by official ballot. State of New Hampshire, Town of Barnstead, warrant for twenty twenty-three annual meeting. Polls will be opened from seven AM to seven PM, March fourteenth. To the inhabitants of the Town of Barnstead and the county of Bellknap and said state qualified to vote town affairs. You are hereby notified to meet at the Barnstead Town Hall in said Barnstead on Tuesday the fourteenth day of March next at seven AM. Of this clock and before noon to act upon the following subjects. To choose unnecessary town officers for the years ensuing. Two selectmen, three-year terms, one trustee of trust fund, three-year term. Two planning board members, three-year term, two budget committee. Members, three-year terms, one overseer of public welfare, one-year term, one library trustee, three-year term. And to let you know. Ten percent of the town showed up to vote. And that is a normal number we take back through the years. So you guys are consistent. Article Two, to vote by official ballot on amendments to the zoning. Barnstead zoning ordinance as proposed by the Barnstead Planning Board and zoning board of adjustments as follows. And you guys all know how to read, so if I can skip the question, you guys give it up. Shout. Yeah. Perfect. Article Three, the second session of town meeting, which is today. The second session. Okay, Article Three, to hear the reports of agents, auditors, committees or officers chosen. To pass any vote relating thereto. Moderator, I'll move the article as presented. Second. All those in favor? Okay. So on that note. I would like to ask the voters if they would allow the police chief, the fire chief. And the chairman of the milfoil committee. Who are not residents. If the audience would allow them to speak to their specific ward article. And I'm asking this ahead of time, it's kind of a housekeeping thing. Okay, and our town engineer is here also. Okay, so do I have a motion to allow them to read to the amelated articles? Second? All those in favor? Thank you.
No.
Article Four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of thirty-three thousand. Four hundred twenty-six dollars for the second. Payment of the three-year lease purchase agreement as passed at the two thousand twenty-two town meeting. For the new dinopack roller for the highway department. This lease agreement contains a non-appropriation clause for pay. Payments beyond two thousand twenty-three. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero, recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, five cents per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Majority vote required. Miss Moderator, I'll move the article as presented.
I'll second the article.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just one thing on the wording of that article. The article states the new dinopack roller. Unless I am wrong, that was a huge humorous, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The article passes as written. Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars. For the third payment of the six-year lease purchase agreement. As passed at the two thousand twenty-one town meeting for the new ambulance. This lease agreement shall contain a non-appropriation clause. For the payments beyond two thousand twenty-three. Recommended by the selectmen, five to zero, recommended by the budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, eight and one half cents per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation, majority vote required. Miss Moderator, I'll move the article as presented. The article has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Chris Hertney, Senator Barnstead. I want to ask just in general for all of these. I see the wording, I, I must confess, I have not made a couple of these most recent meetings. And it says tax impact. But we already were paying it for previous years. Does the tax impact mean an increase in taxes by whatever that money is, or is that just? The included in the current budget for this. Year that we're in would be tax impact for the following, in other words, no. So, so the logic behind this, with all these articles where it's a second year or a third year of payment on something. That tax impact is not an increase, is that correct?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, if, if you notice, it says estimated tax impact, but D R A requires that we have to put what? The tax impact could be, but yes, this is included in the tax rate from carried over, so it is in there, it's not an increase.
Okay, and that would, that would be good, just if that is the case with all of these, unless it says differently, we're going to assume that there's no increase.
Correct, and I'll, what I will do is each article comes up, we'll note that's the public notice as well.
Is there any other discussion?
Linda Valmont, Senator Barnstead. What does it mean to say that you've got a law?
What?
Can't hear it.
Can't hear it.
Just say that you can.
Take it to the microphone, please. They can't hear you, okay.
It says here that the lease agreement shall contain a non-appropriation clause for payments beyond two thousand twenty-three. What exactly does that mean?
Can you hear me? Hear me all right?
Yeah.
So, um, if the town is voting on any lease agreement that's longer than one year. We have to have, um, an escape clause in that. Um, and that just protects the town so that in case the voters would come back and, and vote. Not to continue with that article, then we could, um, get out of the contract.
Any other discussion on Article Five? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, the article passes as written. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars. For the third and final payment of the three-year lease for the purchase of two police vehicles as passed at the two thousand twenty-one town meeting. Total cost approximately one hundred thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero, recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, five cents per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation, majority vote required. What is your budget? Miss Moderator, I'll move the article as presented.
I'll second it.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick note that this is an article that is, has been carried forth each year and is not an increase on budget.
Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The article passes as written. Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to establish a Barnstead Roads Construction and Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund for RSA thirty-one colon nineteen dash A. To include the construction, repair and maintenance of Barnstead Roads. And to raise and appropriate the amount of fifty thousand dollars. To be placed in this fund with dead funds to come from unassigned fund balance. Further to appoint the selectmen and agents to expend. This is a special ward article for RSA thirty-two colon three. Row number six, recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero, tax rate impact, zero cents, majority vote required. What is your budget?
I'll second it.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Could you, I go, Barbara Comptrell, White Oak Grove Center, Barnstead.
Thank you.
I would like to know how much money is in the unassigned fund balance. And if that money is not used without the, the, the lease property taxes.
One moment. We have not, uh, gotten the auditor's report for two thousand twenty-two. As of. The only thing that I could probably give you is last year's.
May I follow up, please?
Sure, thank you.
Um, if we don't know what's in the, um. Unassigned fund balance, how do we know there will be a zero tax impact?
Well, first of all, we know, um, these.
Well, first of all, we know the surplus or unassigned fund balance from last year. We know what that is based on last year's tax rate. And then any monies out of the two thousand twenty-two budget that had not been spent, any extra revenue that comes in adds to that surplus amount, so.
And do you have the balance for the currently from last year's art, that is on his name?
Yes, I can get that.
Jennifer Nisho, I noticed there's a lot of articles on here from the unassigned fund, so I think it's important to at least have an idea. If we vote yes on these and it goes into the negative, what happens?
The fund will not be.
If they're voted on and there's not money for these funds, these funds will not be created.
So who decides which funds would be, if they all are voted in, who decides what funds will be funded if it goes into the negative?
Then that would be a discussion with Department of Revenue, but if we were not assured that the unassigned fund balance was there, the language would not be in there. And I can tell you, last year, it was one million eighty-seven thousand dollars in our unassigned fund balance.
So can I ask another question, please?
Please.
Okay. So we want to assign fifty thousand dollars to the roads department, basically, a fund for them. Why are we not just putting it in to the roads budget? And allowing George Drew to decide?
George Drew would be making the decision on this because it can specifically only be used for roads because it's a specific special warrant article. So he would be making the decision on that along with the board. It's not money that could be spent on anything other than road maintenance for unanticipated funds. If we put the fifty thousand in the budget, that would increase the tax rate on the budget. This is zero tax impact. If there's no money to create this article, there is no tax impact because it will not be created. If we put the fifty thousand in the budget, you'll be looking at a tax impact. Thank you, you're welcome.
My apologies, I didn't identify myself as Karen McCollum when I started speaking. But I would just like to let everyone know that on page twenty-four of your town report, the, all the capital reserves and funds are listed there. I know a question was asked as to how much was in this fund. I know I'm wrong.
Would you be able to define what an EFT is?
That sounds like an expendable trust fund.
It is, yes.
Chris Hertney, one one five North Road.
Could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, is that better? Chris Hertney, one one five North Road. So I just heard a fairly large number, I think it is a million something, that we have currently in unexpended funds in the town. That's a big number, I think everybody in this audience would agree. Is there a cap on that? It just seems there's a lot of money there. I know there's an article twenty-eight, which is going to be very interesting to discuss later on, among the land purchase. And I'm just wondering how that money is decided to be spent? Is it strictly, if there's a million dollars, the selectmen, would there be input from the town at the selectment meeting, make a decision, we're going to throw fifty thousand of that, we're going to throw a hundred thousand of that? So I'd like to know that process, but also, is there a cap? How big is that number yet? Could it get to two million? Could it get to thirty million? I mean, we, as taxpayers, need to know this because the total budget for this year is four million and something for the town, not the school board, of course, but the town. And you've got unexpendable funds, which I'm assuming you expand during the year for emergencies, that makes sense. But that's somewhere near a quarter of the budget for our taxes, for the town portion of the taxes that you're sitting on. And I just, I got a problem with the fact that with that million dollars, you can kind of do what you want to do with it, and not knowing from year to year how much is in it. But again, as somebody said before me, you've got all these warrant articles about toward money, just toward money of that, without really knowing much about, for instance, I'm sure the road agent can tell us what he thinks we're going to need for new roads in the next five years, I'm sure he's got a plan. But we need to hear some of that. It just seems like, you know, nothing against the selectmen, you do a great job, but you've got a lot of money there, and we're pining out very little about how do you spend it, and we have no decision in it. Thank you.
The state requires that the town retains six point nine percent of any unanticipated fund balance, which was your one million. Secondly, you'll notice that this board brings forth as warrant articles for this body to vote on yea or nay, so it's not something that the board is spending this money. We're bringing it to you. Secondly, anytime there's any monies, and I will say that most of this probably has a lot to do with the federal ARPA funds that came in that will also remain as well. So there's been a lot of federal money that's been given to the town that we have judiciously looked at in spending. So it's not like we're going on spending sprees. We bring it full to you. We could have put the fifty thousand for these funds into the budget and increased the budget more so by a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, but we're giving this body the ability to vote for it themselves if they want to create it or not. Because we can't create trust funds without the bodies voting.
Tim Conrad, the balance that we've been talking about, is that included in the unannounced reimbursement?
No.
Okay.
No, the unannounced reimbursement was, is straight from the state. It's their portion of the bridge, state bridge A, and that.
Okay, so that wouldn't subtracting that from that unextended balance, bring it down to six hundred, seven hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. That balance that you have, if I were to make a motion to increase the amount of spending on one of the articles, could I request it to be taken out of the unextended balance?
That is a decision that the board of selectmen would make, and I would just advise not to do that because what you have to understand is if you use unassigned fund balance to not impact the tax rate, you have to use that same amount every year going forward.
Okay.
Because if you don't, that next year, if you don't use unassigned fund balance, then that is a direct impact on your tax rate.
Okay.
So that's why some of these articles in here, you'll notice last year's warrant article for the Dam Site Road project, used unassigned fund balance. We're done with that project. We've raised all the money that we need to complete that project. So that money that was unassigned is now being carried over to supplement these warrant articles going forward so they don't increase your tax rate.
So that unassigned balance of which you speak has accumulated due to things like unable to fill a police department patrol officer for which we had already assigned money to. Is that how that unassigned balance builds up?
Well, anything, as I said, anything that was not spent in the budget that passed for two thousand twenty-two, so any monies that were not expended that were passed will now get added to that balance.
Okay, so it was the million plus was what was not spent last year?
From last, from last year, yes.
Twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-one. We have not, our work's for two thousand twenty-two, of course, we're in January to December here. So our auditors are now in the process of reviewing all of two thousand twenty-two, and they will come back with their findings. They have to have it back to us by June. We will not set our tax rate until September, so everything you vote on today and for the schools will be realized in that tax rate.
Right, but it won't necessarily include the unassigned balance?
Yes, it will, when we get the auditors' completion, they will then add to that for two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
So the figure we gave you is really what was left from two thousand twenty-one.
Excellent, thank you.
And no, it will be added.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Linda Vermonte, I know that you're out at this point.
Excuse me, step up to the mic so that they can hear you in the back.
Linda Vermonte, what is the estimate for the two thousand twenty-two understand or balance for unextended trust funds? I mean, I know it's being audited, but you might have to have some idea of what that number is.
I can estimate around probably two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Is there any other discussion?
Glenn, I'm just North Barnstead Road, I'm just looking for a technical clarification on further to appoint the selectmen as agents to expend. Was there some other process before that?
It would have to come to the town meeting. So if there was an emergency, for example, for this fund?
You'd have to go to town meeting rather than along the board.
Correct.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Jake Perry, I'd like to call the question.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question hasn't been called, on article seven.
I think you should, you see if somebody might have an idea, thank you.
It's to call the question, it's not to vote on the question. That's okay. So, all those in favor of article seven, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, article seven passes as written. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to establish a municipal building repair and maintenance expendable trust fund for RSA thirty-one colon nineteen dash A to include the construction, repair, and maintenance of Barnstead Municipal Buildings and to raise and appropriate the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be placed in this fund with said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. Further, to appoint the selectmen as agents to expend. This is a special warrant article for RSA thirty-two colon three, comma, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen five to zero, recommended by budget committee eight to zero, tax rate impact zero cents, majority vote required. What is your opinion?
Ms. Moderator, I need to ask a question.
I second it.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I have a question on that, Tim Conrad, even. Under the trust funds and common funds, the building maintenance cap, which are four hundred and almost a half million dollars in it, can we just have an explanation as to whether these two would overlap, or was the difference between the two? Thank you.
Which one of you wants to answer that? Tim? Could you come back to the mic, please?
I can't hear you.
Could you come back to the mic, please?
Now I can hear you.
Go ahead.
So the select board wanted to know what trust funds you were looking at.
Well, I was looking at, I was looking at article eight.
Right, but on page twenty-four, what's that?
Page twenty-four, I was looking at the third one from the top, the building maintenance cap.
Yes.
With four and a half million in it?
That's.
I meant for four hundred fifty thousand.
That's a school capital reserve. The trustees of the trust funds have to keep the monies for both the town and the school. So that's a school capital reserve, it's not a town fund.
Okay, would that show up on the town budget report? I mean, the school budget report also?
Yes, they will have those figures there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Nisho, on the same page, the public safety, isn't that the same thing we're talking about? That's the town.
Correct.
And that one has three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in it. That's for a town building?
That's for the town.
Not a school building, right? And so this.
That's for new construction.
Right, and so I just want clarification. So if we open this fund and put fifty thousand dollars in it, I thought I heard you say, once money goes in, it has to continue to go in every year. So if we're committing fifty thousand, no?
We will put money in these funds, and then if, for example, if the funds were fully expended for some, I'm just saying purpose, then we may come back the next year and ask to replenish that fund.
Okay, so if we have to put one dollar in it each year? And to keep the fund going, is that it?
No, no, the fund will always be there, you don't have to put money in, and it can only go away if you voted here and tell me to discontinue a fund.
Okay, but this is creating a new fund?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Hi, Wayne Whitney, I have one question. Do you have a public safety fund that we've been putting money away for years? And the thing is that, why do we need to duplicate this with another fund? Because can't we take the money from the public safety if we have to, if you're going to keep putting that money in? Or are we going to abolish it after we set your goals far as fixing and repairing or adding on to the buildings that we have now? We've already addressed the police station, so I don't understand why we really need two separate funds.
Wayne, as we talked about during Budget Committee, the public safety article is for new construction or additions, it's not for repairs?
Well, obviously with the town hall, but if you put an addition on, you're going to address a lot of things, so some of those funds might be used for reconstruction.
But this is, for example, if the boilers go at the fire department or at the library, the control systems go at the library, you know, if the town shed, something was to happen in there, this is what this money would go for, it's not for new, it's for new construction in the public safety fund. It is not for like repairs and maintenance if there's like boil or failure.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Andrew Sylvester, question, may chairman? I just want to note that in the repair and maintenance line in the operating budget, that was, we decreased that by twenty-five thousand dollars, just so everybody knows. This warrant article that we're going on, that's just maintenance items that pop up, that's all it is.
Thank you. So seeing no one else come to the mic, all those in favor of article eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article passes as written.
Hi, Julie, I would like to restrict reconsideration on articles three to eight, please.
So, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration on articles three to eight, has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, second page. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred six dollars to purchase radios for five. for purchase radios for the fire rescue department, which shall replace outdated equipment and authorize the withdrawal of twenty-two thousand one hundred and six dollars from the fire rescue expendable fund. Current balance, one hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is a special warrant article for RSA thirty-two colon three comma Roman numeral six. Recommended by Celeste nine five to zero, recommended by Budget Committee eight to zero. Tax rate impact zero cents, majority vote required. Please proceed.
I move Article nine as written.
Second.
Article nine has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor of Article nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Article passes as written. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of one million three hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred one dollars for the purchase of one combination aerial and pumper fire apparatus. Eight hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars is the federal grant portion and to authorize the withdrawal of four hundred sixty thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars for the town's portion from the fire rescue vehicle special revenue fund. This fire truck replaces two current vehicles, the two thousand one international pumper and the nineteen seventy-eight aerial tower truck. This is a special warrant article for RSA thirty-two colon three comma Roman numeral six. Recommended by Selectment four to one, recommended by Budget Committee seven to one. Tax rate impact zero cents, majority vote required. The article has been moved and seconded, are there any comments?
Linda Vermonte, um, this has a zero tax impact, but it will cost the town four hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately. Where is this money coming from?
The money comes from the fire rescue vehicle special revenue fund, which has a balance of four hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. So I saw one no vote from the Select Board and one no vote from the Budget Committee, could each of those people explain why they voted no?
Tell me if you can't hear me. Since the inception of this, of this grant several years ago, I have been a proponent of sharing the expenses with adjoining town. All over northern New England, you have towns like Bunsen with five to ten thousand people. And every one of them, almost to a township, has the same needs for police or fire, um, anything else. And so I have proposed that we go into the Pittsfield to purchase this particular piece of equipment. And lo and behold, uh, it seems that the individuals who have put forth this warrant article don't want to share it with anybody because that's the way you do it in New England. You have to have the newest and the biggest piece of equipment and you don't want to share. Now, I can tell you, and I hope that they will tell me I'm incorrect, the, the current piece of equipment, the tower truck that we have, spends almost half its time in Pittsfield. Uh, we're obliged to do, um, I can't think of the term now, but sharing services. But if we're sharing services on this particular truck, because nobody can afford a, a regular ladder truck anymore. Uh, but if we're sharing services or providing services for Pittsfield that often, it seems to me they ought to own it, are part of it. But if I didn't want to do it that way, um, nobody wanted to approach Governor Santos, Senator Sheehan, and request that this be a two-community endeavor. And so, every time I asked, "Have you contacted Pittsfield, have you contacted Pittsfield?" The answer is always no, because they don't want to contact Pittsfield. So I dug in my heels and I said I would fight this all the way to today. Uh, I, there's nothing wrong with equipment, there's, there's no, no question that certainly it is a necessary piece of equipment, but it doesn't have to be owned by just one town.
Hi, Julie Henry, I'm currently on the Budget Committee. Um, yes, there was one person that voted no, however, they don't always give a reason why they vote no. That is their right in the Budget Committee. I don't know why they voted no, um, there was discussions, but maybe they didn't feel that this was a good idea to purchase or a way to spend money, I don't know, but there, there was a no vote.
Thank you.
Chris Fertney. So the question I would have, and I appreciate Selectman Taster giving us that, his opinion, uh, on why he's not for this purchase. Not questioning the age of either of the vehicles that we're gonna replace, uh, do we have any plans? I'll bet you somebody wants to buy those, as old as they are. I don't know who, I don't know how much we would get, but would that money automatically go back? If there was a sale, even for pennies on the dollar, for either or both of these current vehicles that are listed on the board there, will that money automatically go back into this fund balance? Because in essence, we are liquidating it, four thousand dollars or whatever the, the money, that's all that's gonna be left if you purchase the vehicle outright. Thank you.
I'd like to make a request that we have Chief Al Coolin, please come to the microphone to speak, um, in regards to this piece of equipment.
Good morning, thank you all for attending, uh, my name is Al Coolin, I, uh, this green and this, uh.
Can't hear.
This entire, uh, grant here was actually started three years ago by the, uh, Chief, Chief, Sean McAdie. Sean's team was replacing a ladder truck, definitely, the association did by sixteen years ago. At the time the association, uh, yeah, the town, rode it off to the town. The truck is a nineteen seventy-nine, uh, not a real scope, uh, it's seen its time, but it's almost forty, seventy years old. And also the pumper truck was one of the original pumper trucks that was a twin trucks, the other ones that, that keeps driving right now, is our back mine, uh, pumper. And the reason why we're, uh, replacing that also is because of the frame rails are actually starting to rot out. We don't want it to a point where the truck is unsearched, so we're only down to one ladder truck. Now, I do respect the opinion of, uh, Selectman Taster, um, we've, uh, talked about that before, um, my deputy chief, Will Bartels, actually contacted Pittsfield one time. They're struggling just to buy a tanker truck, to replace their tanker truck at this time. And I, I understand your concern and I understand your opinion, and I respect it. At this time, this brand, this is the only brand in the state of New Hampshire that was given as a ladder truck. There were several other, other brands given to other towns throughout the state, the pumper trucks, which are now going for almost seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars for a pumper truck. So this is the only ladder truck brand, and this ladder truck will actually replace two trucks. Will replace a pumper and an existing ladder. And instead of having nine pieces of equipment, we're gonna be down to eight pieces of equipment. Will be a brand new piece, will have warranty on it, it should last us twenty-five years, this truck. And will be, actually replace the first new pumper. So it will be our first line pumper also, which actually puts us five years ahead of replacing the existing pumper we just paid off last year. So that's, uh, that's the reason why I wanted it was brought up, is zero tax increase, uh, tax increase, correct? So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Wait, no, 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 that's not how it's done.
Okay.
I was gonna ask Chief Coolin about the trade-in value of those two trucks, because.
Yes, okay, so, the trade-in that, due to the FEMA grant, we cannot trade the vehicle in, which was the tower truck, cannot be traded in. That will be given back to the association or an agreement will be made with the town and the association. The pumper truck will be traded into the existing, uh, there of the ladder truck. And we're trying to get the highest price possible, I think it's been the price established at this time already. So we will get some money for that. The problem with the old pumper truck is, it is a fiberglass body, which is still in great shape, but the frame rails and structural integrity of the truck is compromised, it's gonna happen soon. We did end up spending almost two thousand dollars last year and just replacing some of the springs on it. It's not gonna get any better, it's just like kicking the, uh, the can down the road. So what we're trying to do is, um, this is a FEMA grant, uh, we also have money in our fire expenditure account, rescue expenditure account. So we're trying to do the best thing for the community at this game time.
So are you gonna recommend that they sell the old truck?
The old truck, is, is recommended, so yes, yes, so the highest price we can afford it.
I believe the contract that we have, uh, on the new truck includes a contract, a contract price of ten thousand dollars for the two thousand one pumper. So that's included here. And then as the chief stated, um, the tower truck has to go back to the association.
And, and one of the things we must realize is, years ago, I mean, most of the houses we have are small state of family homes. A lot of the houses being built now are much larger houses that set off on the road. And, um, the ladder truck, we, we actually compromised, we actually got seven bids for this ladder truck. And we actually did take the lowest bid, we took just about the lowest bid. We didn't go with a hundred footer, we went with eighty-eight footer, which is actually thirteen, almost fourteen feet longer than it is. Existing truck we have now, and it's also comfortable, and it drives up to the front of the property. We have the ladder, it's very important to put the ladder in front of the building, because if you put four or five fire trucks in front of that house, it's on fire. And you can't get that ladder truck in, it's no good having a ladder truck. But this truck itself will be the ladder and the pumper together. So when that ladder truck pulls out and you have a fire, you have a chimney fire, you have an attic fire, any type of fire, we'll have the ladder truck positioned directly in front of the house where it's supposed to be and the pumper, which pumps the water from the tankers or the tank itself. And it's gonna be a dual-purpose truck, which a lot of communities in the state of New Hampshire are now going. Five hundred gallons of water.
When you ask questions, you have to come up to the mic.
And a couple of things, when we received the bids on this truck, there was something we actually took off to keep the costs down. It was, uh, the onboard air, they all have, uh, air packs, SCBA packs. I, I didn't see a need for that expenditure yet, I didn't see a need for a big, big ten, tape generator. Um, we got generators, which will work fine, and all the equipment that would be on this truck will actually come off the old truck, keep the costs down. And it's not, there's no face, you've got all the whistles, it's a fire truck, it's a working fire truck. It's, it's good-looking, it's gonna be green with a black ladder, and, uh, I can tell you, you'll see it around town if you all vote on it. Would like your vote, thank you.
In for Chief. Step up to the mic, Mr. Whitney.
Wayne Whitney, um, a question for the, actually a clarification for the chief, if you could, um, with the new technology, I never know a lot of people say, "Well, we don't have a lot of fires in our town," but we have that, guys. And the thing is with the new pumper truck, the, the technology for the high-pressure hose, if you could just give us a little bit of a background on how much more pressure that is.
Go ahead, Chief.
Basically, the technology, uh, for the pumpers are basically the same we've had for years. Either a water pump or a ale pump. Um, basically what it does is, um, a pumper truck usually takes the water from the water tanks, puts it into a pump, pressurized it, insert pressure, squirt itself through the hose. One of the most important things is our new hose design and the diameter of the hose, which is more effective than it was years ago. We also want to conserve all the water, because when you have five hundred gallons, you'll wait for a tanker to come in, you'll, you've got about three or four minutes of, uh, water to put on the fire. And one of the things that's very important is the, uh, and we do have fires, as I said, we had a fatal fire just the other day. And then last Friday, we also had a fire on the old SAU building, which is a very large building down on South Bonneville Road. Firefighters in it, exceptional job knocking that fire down. If you could see the damage in that building and where the fire located, they had to go through the structure, down the hallway to extinguish the fire. I did the investigations with one of the private investigators, and they did an amazing job stopping that fire with five hundred gallons of water. That building would have got going, it was an old building, probably built in the eighteen or early nineteen hundreds. It still had logs, had some of the floor joints and everything, so they did an excellent job there.
David Allen, uh, North Park, New Durham. Mr. Taster, I may surprise you, but I, uh, totally support the position that you are taking. I, and I think that this town needs to send a message to the Select Board, uh, that, you know, Gordon Preston was on the board, he made another effort to try to, uh, work together with other towns. Um, and we cannot continue to afford all of these things, um, and we don't find ways to provide it. But I would be interested in hearing, um, if we vote no on this, um, does that completely cancel the grant? Or is there time to, uh, try to work to find a, a town that would share the cost?
Yeah, if this, uh, if this doesn't get approved, then, then it voids the grant. So those monies will not be available to purchase this vehicle. Um, it's, it's, it's important that we take advantage of this right now. Um, if, it, it's gonna replace two older trucks. The maintenance alone, the repairs, the cost of just keeping those two going for the next few years is gonna compensate the four hundred thousand dollars that they put into it. Um, I recommend this highly, and.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate, um, what we want, and, and I kind of agree with you. I do have a couple of questions, though, the tank size, chief, is five hundred or fifteen hundred?
Five hundred, sorry.
Five hundred, five hundred, glass like spinning on a fire. So the argument of having a ladder truck and water at the same time while you wait for a tanker is nil, as far as I'm concerned. I have five gallon tanks like that anyway, and that goes to less than four minutes. So, um, that I don't think is a good argument. Um, the seventy-eight, oh, the other question I had, just shy of forty-five feet long, will that traverse all roads to the town ownership?
Drop it low.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and then the third question I have, the seventy-eight tower truck, we have now, is that a ladder or a tower?
Tower.
That's a tower, which is also a part of the fire department in New Durham, in Alton, in Gilminton. Um, how many times has this particular truck gone out to Pittsfield? Over the last year?
Last year, six.
Six times.
Can everybody, can you stand up, Chief, and speak at this?
Truck does no, I will say, the truck does no mutual aid, so does mutual aid come to us. With the two recent fires, we did have Gilminton, Alton, New Durham, um. With the two recent fires, we did have Gilmington, Alton, New Durham, um, actually, uh, one of the fires we had on John Tascal Road, who didn't have a story, which Frank Hollis Obama, the attached barn, I actually called the second alarm, we needed resources. We even had Roy Testa come in. Um, the problem there is, again, we didn't get our ladder truck in the fire early enough. We couldn't even utilize the ladder if we needed it. The firefighters did an amazing stop on that fire. They contained that fire to the barn itself. Yes, it does have five hundred gallons. Uh, used efficiently, it's about two and a half to three minutes worth of water. Depends on the nozzle and how you use the water, of course. We've been training on that also. Uh, the original grant, which is Sean, uh, Chief McGee wrote, was for a three hundred gallon tank. And we upped it to a five hundred gallon tank, and that's about the largest tank they could put on that ladder truck for that length of truck because of the actual, yes. And I'll be honest with you, there are some roads in this town, we all know them, that we can barely get our hands on. So I had to be honest with you and say, there are some roads, a lot of the camp roads and places like that, that truck remain on scene, but I do not want to lie to you on that. Thank you.
Kate Crary, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, I am a grant funded employee. I, I work primarily on grants at Wright Grants. Um, I just wanna say out loud that, that when you apply for a federal grant, it is a huge undertaking. I'm assuming that this took more than a year to do. Can you say how long?
Chief McGee actually started thinking about this, I think, five years ago, three years ago when I came on the scene. Uh, he was in, he had, he had actually applied for the grant a year before we could deny the certain, um, uh, criteria we did not meet. So he did more research and he never gave up, he never gave up. Sean, this is his dream to get this ladder truck and replace the two pieces that were ancient. I mean, just, just remember, in five years, we're probably gonna be looking for a new pumper truck, or we're gonna need a pumper truck when that other one goes out of service, if not sooner. The new pumpers right now are going for almost $800,000. If we refuse this grant, the chance, you can correct me, the chance of us applying for another grant is probably nil. They'll look at us and say, no, thank you, you had your chance, we gave you the biggest grant in the state of New Hampshire, you denied it, they're gonna move on to other towns. And then we'll be forced into paying for a truck that's gonna be about $800,000. The town of Langley just bought a brand new ladder truck, a brand new pumper truck. It was a basic E1 pumper truck with $760,000, just like that. And that's your base model.
So, so hearing what, what Ed said earlier, which I appreciate, which is, you know, nobody can afford one of these anymore, understanding that this is a multi-year grant process, I respect needing to partner with other towns, but there's nothing that says that that can't still happen. Um, you know, with MOUs and shared maintenance and things like that, that's still possible, right? And maybe at a lesser degree than taking on the purchase, which it sounds like Pittsburgh wasn't willing to do. So there's still options, right? Like one thing I learned being grant funded is you work on all the things, like all the things are important. So accepting the grant, purchasing the truck and then figuring out other ways to defray those costs moving forward is still a possibility ultimately. By completing this grant, demonstrating to the federal government, bleh, that we, I'd say that, demonstrating to the federal government that we meet criteria, not only for the need, but also for the financial need, is a huge undertaking and, and you're absolutely right. If you were, and this shouldn't force anybody to go a certain way, but if you refuse grant funds, it makes them harder to get their future. It just makes it more difficult. So I'm all for it. I think those aren't appropriate.
So the question has been moved. And then I'll let Mr. Cray. Okay. All those ready to vote on warrant article 10? I'm John, let Mr. Kraus speak because he's been in line. And after that, he'll vote on.
If I don't get the case to speak.
You weren't in line?
I was, I sat down twice.
The question has been called, Mr. Kraus was standing in line. Point of order, so point of order, Mr. Dunn was also, Mr. Dwayne was also in line several times and sat down so that we could see while he was speaking. So first, the question has been called, we'll, we'll get to Mr. Dwayne in a minute. All those in favor of voting on article 10 after Mr. Kraus speaks, and then you can tell if you want Mr. Dwayne to speak in line. So the question has been called, all those in favor of voting on article 10, please say yes. Any pose?
No.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Dwayne was in line and he sat down. Do you guys wanna allow him to speak or not?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Dwayne comes to my side.
Thank you.
We have Mr. Kraus, Mr. Dwayne, and then you will vote on article 10.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to talk about the fire department in the town of Barnstead.
Okay, identify yourself.
I will. My name is George Kraus and I had the awesome distinction to be the first town fire chief in the town of Barnstead in 1995. One of the things that I did immediately was I reached out to every community around us and Mr. Tascal was part of that group that met, uh, several times to discuss the opportunity to get collectively together as communities to develop a, a, relationships that will allow us to do more things efficiently. And it, it is true to his word because at that meeting, I recall him saying to Fred Haff from Pittsfield, that, um, we should be doing this together and we're willing to commit to do that. And so I applauded at, at that time and, uh, and today. But however, the obstacle we ran into then was that the communities around us had no interest, and I repeat, no interest in doing anything differently than what they were doing. They didn't wanna talk about it because in their words, we have a really good small department and we're very happy with what they do and we don't need to do any more. I would like to ask the moderator to consider appointing a special committee, uh, and select, and just to go out and solicit from the towns around us, uh, people of lifelines from the board of selectmen, the fire departments, uh, perhaps on the EMS agency if necessary, to review this because we quite honestly, in my opinion, we're at a very tr- uh, critical point. We have a very limited fire department in personnel. There is a less interested or available people that are willing to put in the time to become a member of the call force, i.e. the volunteer department side. And unless we start to do something, we're, we're gonna have somebody, and unfortunately we have, we lost a civilian this last week, no, no, no fault to the fire department. It was, fire was way advanced before that call was ever made, in my estimation. But it, we're gonna have a lot of totality on the firefighter side because of lack of personnel to be, and they're gonna try to do something and they're gonna get caught. And so I, I, I don't know if the moderator can do that, but I would really encourage, if not the moderator, then the board of selectmen, to establish a working committee to look at and evaluate options for how to do, um, I won't limit it to Pfizer, I'm just gonna limit it to public safety, you know, there may, may be broader in scope. But with regards to the two trucks that they're replacing, which I bought both of them, I'm not sure that's a good thing or a bad thing. Uh, this is a, a good decision and it was worked on hard by a lot of people. Certainly Sean was instrumental in spearheading that. And it is a huge benefit to this town because although I was chastised for making the initial tower purchase by several people, um, the issue was it was never about big buildings. It was about risk management and safety for the firefighters, trying to work on two, two or two and a half story buildings with metal roofs and snow and ice and trying to be able to be safe, work safely and not have someone get hurt. So I encourage us to support the article and continue to work hard in, in making Barnstead a safer community. Thank you.
Rick Dwayne? I was the election committee member who voted against this and it's got nothing to do with not supporting the fire department. It's looking at where our, our action is. And if you look in your town report for the last couple of years, you'll see that in last year, five and a half percent of their calls were for fire and well over sixty percent were for their EMS department. And last year, the fire was around seven percent of their calls. So looking at the amount of money that the town has available to purchase the equipment for the fire department and looking at the, uh, capital approval plan, the fire department's looking at an ambulance in three to four, five years. Um, and they're running about a half a million bucks. You're burning up everything in this fund except for $4,000. So my thought was to leave the money in there, not to support this, but support what we really, in my estimation, need is on the EMS side. So that was my thought behind, uh, this article. This, I gotta thank Mr. Kraus, this 1978 Mack truck, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, it seemed as a beast, well made, it doesn't have a lot of the safety features, anti-lock brakes and things with seat belts, but didn't have it when they bought it either. So I would just urge you to think about that. We only have that amount of dollars to do things with. And that's why I, I felt we should allocate our money to a different, uh, private project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The question has been called, all those in favor of article 10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Article 10 passes. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $434,612 to be placed in the bridge construction capital reserve fund. Current balance, $30,399 to come from unassigned fund balance. This tribute represents the state's reimbursement of costs associated with the Hanover Bridge. This is a special award article for RSA 32 colon three comma Roman numeral six, recommended by selectmen five to eight, recommended by budget committee eight to zero, tax rate impact zero percent, majority vote required.
I'm moderator. I move article 11, do you accept it as read?
I'll second. The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is that good? Chris Verden, so I wanna make sure I understand this. We have an ETF. Is article 11 dealing with taking money from the ETF? Cause I don't see the word ETF, but I do see unassigned balances. Is that correct? Are they one and the same?
We're just putting the money into the capital reserve that we receive from the state. Your question is, is this an expendable trust fund or capital reserve? It's an expendable trust fund.
So it is the same ETF that we've been talking about for some of these other warrant articles that we've already passed, is that correct?
Some, some of these articles may be capital reserves, some may be expendable trusts, some have the selectmen as agents to expend.
Okay, so the, the reason I'm asking the question, it's a big amount of money, I think everybody would agree. I heard earlier that, first number I heard, because we had about a million dollars in expend, and expend of, uh, the ETF. And then he said, my estimate, although it hasn't been fully audited yet, is we have $250,000 in the ETF. That's an estimate because that's been audited. So I'm not saying it's a shell game or I'm saying you're trying to just do anything that's not correct. I'm just saying, I'm trying to get a handle on, you got a lot of warrant articles where you're transferring money from the existing ETF, which I heard was a million, but now it's only 250 roughly, 250,000. This number alone, if it's coming from that same pot of money, is almost twice as much as what you estimate you have left for 2022. So I, I think for all the voters here, we do have to get a better handle on where these pots of money physically are and who has access to them and for what things, because I, I'm confused. Thank you.
Yes. There is the unassigned fund balance that we had a million in and the 250 will be added to. An expendable trust fund is a fund that has been created here before town meeting that's held by the trustees of the trust fund and only spent for the purposes that it was created for. So two totally separate things, I think you're confused, e, the ETFs are not the unassigned fund balance.
Okay, that makes it a little clearer. So I asked a question, the first time I was up here, is there a cap on these funds? How big can they get before we say, hey, we're, we have to do something with them because they can't keep on growing forever? Is there such a thing as a cap?
No, every town, the state of New Hampshire wants every town to have as much in their unassigned fund balance or surplus as possible for, um, any emergencies, things that might happen if we have disasters such as the tornado several years ago. And you have to spend all, all the monies that you have to, um, assess the situation and take care of the situation. If that money puts, puts you over your bottom line of your budget, you have to go to the state and ask for emergency expenditures. That emergency expenditure is your unassigned fund balance. However, the unassigned fund balance can also be used for, uh, warrant articles and to keep the tax rate impact down or at zero.
Okay, so my final question then with this in general is where you have this ETF or unassigned funds, at some point, while you can project for expenditures, whether it be for the road agent, uh, for the, for the town, for other expenditures that you know are coming down the road, at some point, you could actually transfer some of this money and quite frankly, I think the, the, the cycling the last few years has done a, a great job in keeping our taxes pretty much level. And I do appreciate that, I think most people here would agree, but that you could use some of those unassigned funds or ETF, if the number ballooned to whatever number you think is appropriate, you could move some of that money and at least keep our taxes level or possibly even reduce the assessment for a period of time. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's what a lot of these articles are doing.
Thank you very much.
Andrew Celeste, your project committee chairman. This article 11 is a reimbursement. When the town gets reimbursed, the money has to go into the unassigned fund balance. Town voters have to vote to put the money back into the capital reserve, is what they have to do with any reimbursement that the town gets, just so you know.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of article 11, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 11 passes as written. Article 12, to see if the town of Barnstead will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $250,000 to be placed in the road paving and maintenance expendable trust fund. Current balance, $23,957. This is a special award article for RSA 32 colon three comma Roman numeral six, recommended by selectmen five to zero, recommended by budget committee eight to zero, tax rate impact forty cents per $1,000, assessed valuation, majority vote required. The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Conrad?
Just waiting to be acknowledged, thank you. Having watched the road that passes in front of my house reclaimed and resurfaced by our town highway department, I was immensely impressed by how they worked and the quality of the job, um, even though our town highway department did not do the ser- the resurfacing, they did the preparation. I took it upon myself to go over some of the other roads in Barnstead and that was
I took it upon myself to go over some of the other roads in Barnstead, and that would include White Oak Road and North Barnstead Road. And the quality seems also to be exceptional. And because of that, and because costs have gone up, I'd like to make an amendment to this article. I'd like to amend it to 300,000 from 250,000 for the resurfacing. Costs have gone up. We still have something to be accomplished, but it seems to be well on its way to getting done what we would like to see done. And I know this year, Gray Hill Road will be done, and that's going to be a monumental undertaking. But there are others also, so anyway, that would be my amendment to the article, thank you.
Is there a second to this article, Comrade, again? Second. Can I have your name, please? Next time I'll make you come up to the microphone. We have one amendment on the floor.
Chris Verden, so I'm speaking to the original warrant article, I guess that the... We're putting money, we're creating ETF, we're putting money into an ETF just for this purpose, I believe. And I guess my question would be again, we have, it sounds like, well over a million dollars in the ETF as it currently exists for the town. The other side, the other side thought, we have a pool of money, call it what you want, I'm still confused by the difference, but that's all right. Bottom line is, we have over a million dollars, and I know we've already appropriated some of that through some of these previous warrant articles, but my question would be is, obviously important, I'm not questioning that, and there's not much money in the current balance. Why can't we use money from the unassigned funds? Slamfire ETF, call it a third name if you want, there's different pools of money, I get it. Why can't we use some of that money to take care of this? And the reason I mention it is, is because you can see in the black print at the bottom, for somebody with a home that's valued $200,000, it's going to be another 80 bucks. We haven't even got to some of the other warrant articles yet, and there's a school board meeting next week. And there's a lot of money that's being projected to be spent, which will raise taxes for that as well. So if you can just tell me why you've decided not to dip into the existing unassigned funds to pay for this very important project, I am sure, instead of, at this point, adding to our tax rate, it would be much appreciated, thank you.
And I probably should have noted that this was already in last year's budget, so it does not increase your tax rate. That's just there as information on what estimated tax impact would be. But we already did that last year.
So first, we wrote on the amendment to add $50,000 to Article 12 to make it 300,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. The original Article 12 is $250,000, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the original article passes. In Article 13, there is a typo in the book. So it should say, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $125,000 to be placed in the highway department heavy equipment capital reserve fund. Current balance, $75,105. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, 20 cents per $1,000 assessed value, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
I'll read the article.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just to note that last year's article was for 100,000, so the 25,000 would have a tax impact of five cents per 1,000. So, not a question.
Linda Vermont, are you guys here? What is the current status of the equipment for the highway department? Will anything be, needed to be replaced in the next couple of months?
The road agent is not here, so one of the selectmen is here.
Yeah, we do have another brand coming up for, for the plow trucks up there, one of the older ones that we've been spending a lot of money on. Seems to break down every trip, but we are, we are planning on replacing that one, that one truck only, I believe, this year.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, the discussion, all those in favor of Article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 13 passes as 125,000. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $43,363 to be placed in the highway department heavy equipment capital reserve fund. Current balance, $75,105, to come from unassigned fund balance. This figure represents the state's reimbursement of the highway department diesel truck grant. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, zero cents, majority vote required. What is your pleasure?
I'll read the article as read.
I'll second.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 14 passes as...
Hi, Kelly Henry, I would like to restrict reconsideration on Articles 9 through 14, please.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to restrict, restrict reconsideration of Articles 9 through 14. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. That goes as passed. Article 15, to see if the town of Barnstead will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $50,000 to be added to the fire rescue expendable trust fund. Current balance, $145,248. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, 8 cents per $1,000 assessed valuation, majority vote required, what is your pleasure? What is the article's next?
I'll second.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
This is just to note that this amount was in last year's budget, so it is not an increase on your taxes.
Being and hearing none, discussion, all those in favor of Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 15 passes as read. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 to be placed in the Barnstead 300-year celebration expendable trust. Current balance, $20,902. 300 years will be 2027. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, one half cent per $1,000 of assessed valuation, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 16, do you accept it as read?
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Again, this is another article that was in last year's budget and is not an increase on your taxes.
Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please say no. Okay, Article 16 passes as read. Article 17, to see if the town of Barnstead will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $50,000 to be placed in the public safety building capital reserve with said funds to come from unassigned fund balance. Current balance, $356,421. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, zero cents, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
Moderator, I'll read the articles presented.
I'll second.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this article?
Last year, the amount put into the article was 75,000, and we did reduce it to 50,000 this year.
Linda Vermont? Could you stick up to the mic or to the people's side? Linda Vermont? Would you be able to speak to the fact that this year, we're going to have a tax reassessment for the town? And what that will impact taxpayers?
We have been assessing, I guess we were at 58% this year, it needs to be at a minimum of 92%, I believe. Ninety to 110%. There's going to be some that will see a reduction in the taxes, some of the taxes will stay the same, and others may see an increase. We will not have that answer until the assessment is done.
The value, new value of the town will be set in September, just before we drop your tax rate. Typically, with a rebound, your, the value of the town will increase and the tax rate will decrease.
George Crowe, in reviewing the slide that's in front of us, I, I have some concerns and some questions. Because it talks about the public safety building fund, and I realize that we can extend that kind of loosely when we talk about emergency management, but my question really boils down to this very simple question. I've heard rumor that the board of selectmen are building a new town hall with some sort of an addition that's going to have offices for everybody out of the sun. And I haven't seen anything about that, so I would like an explanation of what the plans are. Allegedly, it's coming from unexpendanted funds that came back through a few months or some of our past storms.
The select board, in working with our building inspector, have looked at possibly putting an addition on the back section of the town hall. There is no plan whatsoever to be building a new town hall, and it is strictly to meet the requirements of the six-foot spacing between, which I don't know if it's even affecting anyone, but we were told you can no longer really hold elections due to the amount of space at the town hall. By putting the addition on, we're going to realign it so that we're able to hold some there. But all plans, when they come forward, will all be included with public hearings. This is not something that you're going to wake up one day and find an addition on the town hall. That's not the way the select board does things.
Linda Vermont, what is the estimated cost of a new town hall?
We have no estimate for a new town hall because that's not something the select board has even looked at.
Seeing and hearing none, the discussion on Article 17, all those in favor of Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Article 17 passes as written. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,500 to be placed in the emergency procurement expendable trust with said funds to come from unassigned fund balance. Current balance, $26,636. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, zero cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
I move Article 18, do you accept it as read?
I will second.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor of Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article 18 passes as written. Article 19, to add money to the, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $13,000 to be placed in the emergency fuel and heat expendable trust fund with said funds to come from unassigned fund balance. Current balance, $27,159. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, zero cents, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
Ms. Moderator, I motion to accept the article as presented.
The article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor of Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please say no. Article 19 passes as written. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $20,000 to be placed in the municipal computer and equipment expendable trust fund. Current balance, $26,785. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, eight to zero. Tax rate impact, 3 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
I move Art. 40, do you accept it as read?
I will second.
Is there any discussion, the article has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on Article 20?
Again, Ms. Moderator, this article was in last year's budget and is not an increase on taxes.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, discussion, all those in favor of Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Article 20 passes as written. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $10,000 to be placed in the milfoil treatment expendable trust fund. Current balance, $13,851. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral six. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by budget committee, seven to one. Tax rate impact, 2 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation, majority vote required, what is your pleasure?
I move Article 41, do you accept it as read?
I'll second.
Article 41 has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Nester is on the floor, you gave him permission to speak.
Thank you, very good. I wouldn't hesitate the opportunity to think that we won the town of Barnstead. Um, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the only one in the town of Barnstead for the support we have on milfoil. I think I can honestly say that, um,
Can't hear yet.
... to putting down the, the milfoil in the town of Barnstead. Uh, unfortunately, um, Say it? Oh, okay.
There you go.
Right close? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Anyway, good morning. Um, so the issue that we have right now is that we've got, we think we've got most of the milfoil, but I'm going to ask, um, anybody that's on the river, on the Suncook Lakes or Lock Lake to take the time to look for any plants that are growing and report back to a number of members that are on, on the committee now. Uh, this is really critical time. If we don't get every plant out of the waterway, then we're going to be right back into the mud. And, um, we, we spent a lot of money, but I think we can honestly say that we're, we're on the, on the down slope. And, um, what I wanted to do is just give you a quick idea of, of a map that I draw. Uh, let me put this down. And just give you an idea of the efforts that we've been going through. Look at this map, uh, at this point, correct? Um, the total hatch area is where we effectively had milfoil toppling the entire river. And this past year, we did treatments and spot treatments in the previous year. You see the, uh, the solid areas? Those were taken care of, uh, last year, not this, this, not twenty-twenty-two, but twenty-twenty-one. And those are the high dense areas of milfoil. And this past year, uh, twenty-twenty-two, oh, take it, uh, twenty-twenty-two, um, we treated all the other remaining plants and they're generally enclosed. The biggest issue that we have with milfoil, for those who don't know the problem, is that it, um, takes care of the oxygen. It sucks out the oxygen out of the water. It forms a dark canopy over the waterway and, uh, it totally destroys or, or spunts the growth of normal plants. And so you wind up losing fish. Uh, you wind up with a mass of plant matter that, 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 um, inhibits propellers and prevents or reduces the use of kayaks because it's the surface at the waterway, the surface, uh, with the plants on it just really add a lot of resistance to the hook. So let me just, uh, get my list. I just don't want to miss anybody here, but what's really nice is, is that we finally got a full complement of the milfoil committee and that's represented by two people from each waterway that has milfoil. And so Jim who's here and, uh, Gil McDonald, uh, I'm sorry, McCullough. I always forget that stuff. Um, they represent the town of Barnstead and particularly, um, the, the whole waterway, uh, on the committee. We have two people from, um, Half Moon Lake, um, Linda, um, Vermonte and Deborah Petrcek. Now, Half Moon Lake doesn't have milfoil per se, and, but they are representing Half Moon if we are applying milfoil. We think we've got that, that lake totally clean. And then, uh, we have, um, Buckney and, and Maillon that represent Half Moon Lake. And we have two members, two, two families, sorry. I'm sorry, Suncook, but I'm getting myself. And, uh, and then we have two, two families that are representing, uh, the, uh, Suncook River. And that is Diane Markviller and Allison Todd Matheson. So if you recognize these people, if you know these people, don't hesitate to give them a call if you find any milfoil in the waterways. Uh, I want to recognize Robyn Donovan and Dave LeBret for letting us, uh, use their property to, uh, to support the operations and, and hooks the, uh, bar that we use for diving. And King LaGrove was the president of the Suncook River. So, uh, my hope is that this year we'll have a knockout chance. I think for the future, we'll be always for the next at least three to five years, uh, monitoring the river, uh, with a small amount of money, but I think the major expenses for milfoil in the town of Barnstead is coming to a close. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Come up to the mic, please. Come up to the mic.
I wanted to ask about Brendal Pond.
Uh, Brendal Pond is, uh, um, is a strange waterway in the sense that there are no, no houses around it, but it has drawn up and down in the concentration of milfoil. And about ten years ago, we, we, uh, found that the, some people putting boats into Brendal Pond were fishing, were bringing milfoil attached to the boat into, um, into Suncook Lake system. And, uh, we think that, um, we were getting ready to look at treating that and then all of a sudden there was a turnover in Brendal Pond and the amount of milfoil just dropped dramatically. So we don't understand that. We're watching that and I think once we get the river and the, the properties that are around the, the waterways that have a high value like, uh, Suncook Lake, Half Moon Lake, uh, the, uh, Suncook River, we have to get those square away because they have, the milfoil, when it gets so dense that it could affect property values. But once we do that, then we'll take the hard work with Brendal Pond. Once we get the, the monies back to, uh, a reasonable amount, we spent fifty thousand dollars on this treatment in the last two or three years and, uh, you know, it's, it's going to pay off. It looks like it's paying off, but, uh, we want to be prudent on how we spend our, you know, the rest, that's the situation over there.
Hi, Wayne Whitty. I brought this up last year. My concern about whether shoveling stuff against its tide in regards to the milfoil. I'm, you know, I'm in favor of controlling it, but my concern is that, I know we're not a state park, but I brought this issue up about boats turning in without being washed off and treated before they get put into the lakes. And one of the answers from one person said, well, we don't have boats coming into the lake. And that's not true and we know that. And as if we don't have some sort of resource to widen down these boats before they get put into the lake, we're still going to have the problem of going home for it. So, you know, we should try and figure out what we can do to limit the people coming into the water. We have to have somebody at the boat launches, ask them where the boats were before, the state parks do it. And the thing is if the townspeople are going to spend this kind of money, we should be accountable for what boats come into the lake.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Kevin Johnson, I just want to ask, um, at, um, Hunter's Pond, uh, is there any milfoil in Hunter's Pond?
Uh, no, there isn't. Sorry, um, Hunter's Pond, we look at very, very specifically, uh, and it turns out it's loaded with ladder work. Ladder work. And ladder work looks like milfoil. We have to recognize that it's different because it has little bladder, black and white ladders on it that actually feed the nourishment to the plants. Um, it is not considered invasive for the state of New Hampshire, but it can be a pain in the butt. And the only way we recommend is that you get out with a rake or you pull a ladder through the water and get it out of the water because it just, uh, it just replicates it. It's wetting the water. So, and it doesn't have much of a root structure. So you're going to find islands floating around the waterway if you have ladder work. And, uh, it's, it's just, it's just an insult.
I just wanted to say that, um, I know we discussed this maybe five or six years ago, quite a long time ago. Nobody's done anything on the pond to try to collect that stuff and it's really getting really bad. I can see it across the pond, a bit huge, a bit huge, uh, you know. Is, is that going to be an issue if it gets too bad, too, too much get in the water or?
Well, I, I think, uh, it's, it's not that. So it will decay and break up and fall to the bottom. But, uh, during the summer, when it's warmer, uh, you can get a wound that has quite a bit of new plants. And I think the only method that you can do is just to get some of the neighbors together, take a half, uh, take an afternoon on a Saturday and, and grab a ladder, hook, you know, tie a couple of ropes to it, pull it through the water and that'll plump it up and then just pull it off to the shore somewhere. And that would be the most effective way you could rid of it.
Kevin, let's focus on the milfoil and you can talk to Ed about your other plant problem. Is this a milfoil question or not?
Yes. Another question. With the milfoil, when, when you take care of all the milfoil in the town of Barnstead, you guys say where the town is okay, someone from the state will still go around and check every year to make sure that it hasn't come back.
Um, there's a young woman in line.
I just noticed you purposely didn't say Lock Lake, but I know we have a milfoil problem that we not need, so this return money not go towards any of that.
Could we have your name? Dawn, any of us, like, Dawn Lake?
Yeah, the, uh, we've had an very interesting, uh, uh, change in, um, the state rules handling Lock Lake. Before Lock Lake had, was required by the state to submit their own applications and not be part of any grants. That has changed and, um, starting this year, um, Lock Lake is now part of the Barnstead, the town of Barnstead brand. And, um, and I did mention the two people that are representing Lock Lake. One, the Barnstead Milfoil Committee, that's Steve Donnich and, um, all right. I, I, I'm only seeing, um, Jessica, that's, uh, Jessica Van Valkenberg. I've only seen her once or two, a few times, so I just don't have that memory in the head yet. But in any case, uh, what we have decided to do is to support their divers this year for three thousand dollars. So they're part of that, the, this funding. And the reason why we're not treating is because it's been still affected in Lock Lake. Uh, we knocked down ninety-nine percent of the milfoil in Lock Lake. We did a light bar stand, sliced down a lot, Lake. Uh, it looks like there's only a few plants growing that, which are manageable by a diver and that's the most effective way because to do fifteen, fifteen hundred square feet, you've got to spend about five grand. And, uh, with, with the three thousand allocated, it looks like from Steve's point and Steve's calculations, that'll cover any areas that may have some milfoil coming back. And as I stated earlier, we really need to get every plant. And the most effective way now is to spot it and put a diver in the water and pull the roots. So that could be something.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Easter? Please come up to the mic. Okay, seeing and hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of Article twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
Thank you very much.
Article twenty-one passes as read.
Hi, Kelly Henry. I would like to restrict the consideration on Articles fifteen through twenty-one.
Okay, do you have a motion to restrict Articles fifteen through twenty-one seconded? Michelle Rosado seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, let's turn the page. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of, and the incorrect amount is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars to be placed in the milfoil treatment expendable trust fund with said funds to come from unassigned fund balance. Current balance, thirteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars. This represents the state's reimbursement for costs associated with the milfoil grant. This is a special warrant article for RSA thirty-two, colon, three, comma, Roman numeral six. Recommended by Selectmen five to zero, recommended by Budget Committee eight to zero. Tax rate impact zero cents per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Majority vote required. What is your pleasure?
Move Article twenty-two, you accept it as read.
Article twenty-two has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Easter is on.
I just wanted to, uh, let you know that, uh, we are going to try to treat the, uh, the, uh, water loaves that have really taken over Suncook River. Uh, the problem with the water loaves is you just can't break them with your hands and they wrap around the prop. And now they've become so prevalent because they've knocked down the milfoil, that they've literally taken over the waterway and it makes it very, very difficult for fishermen to get out there. And, uh, even if you're canoeing a kayak, then you have, uh, water resistance for those plants. This water loave problem is not recognized by the state of New Hampshire as, as a plant that requires funding to eradicate. They don't consider it, uh, a plant that's on the, the infectious list of evil. So we have to pay for that. And that's what we're trying to do is to spend somewhere around eight to ten thousand dollars to get rid of those white water loaves. Uh, they will eventually come back, but it's going to take them a good ten to twelve years to get back to this point. We hope that there may be, uh, an easier way to do that, but right now it's very, very difficult because they're, they're a very, very structured plant. It's very difficult to get it out of the water. Anyway, that's, that's the problem.
Thank you.
Suzanne Allison, so I guess my question is, is this now the milfoil and water loaf committee? Um, and what are you using to eradicate the water loaves? Like, I'm always a little nervous about some of these so-called safe chemicals that we use to eradicate one thing and then another thing. Sure.
Yeah, the, uh, water loaves are very sensitive to, um, uh, a particular salt that you spread on the tops of the leaves. So they're actually just going to spray that, uh, salt-based material on the leaves and that prevents the photosynthesis from occurring and, and translocating energy back down to the plant to keep it sort of alive. And so it's, it's a very, very mild, it's considered an herbicide only because it destroys the plant, but it's, it's not going to affect the, uh, anything, any other plants and it's not going to affect the, uh, the crustaceans and the, um, fish in the water or anything like that. We're very, very sensitive to that and the people who do the treeing, Solitude, uh, stands by all these statements about the safety of this. So they do this routinely in Massachusetts quite a bit. We're one of the few water bodies that have this white loave infestation problem. And I don't understand why right now. We haven't really looked at it, but, uh, we're primary, we're a milfoil committee, but we're also watching the health and safety and operation of the waterways in the town of Barnstead. So that's really our purpose.
Is there any other discussion on Article twenty-two? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-two, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Thank you. Article twenty-two passes as written. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of four thousand dollars to be placed in the library computer support trust expendable fund. Current balance, two thousand, six oh two dollars. This special article is a special warrant article for RSA thirty-two, colon, three, Roman numeral six. Recommended by Selectmen four to one, recommended by Budget Committee eight to zero. Tax rate impact less than one cent per a thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Majority vote required. What is your pleasure?
I need the article listed. I will second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Article twenty-three, Article 23 passes as written. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be placed in the Sister and Construction and Maintenance Expendable Fund. Current balance $66,675. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral 6. Recommended by Selectmen 5 to 0, recommended by Budget Committee 8 to 0. Tax rate impact 2 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation. Majority vote required. What is your pleasure?
Moderator, I move Article 24 being accepted as read.
Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Article 24 passes as read. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $5,000 to be placed in the Parks and Recreation Facility Capital Reserve Fund. Current balance $42,786. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman numeral 6. Recommended by Selectmen 4 to 1, not recommended by Budget Committee 3 to 5. Tax rate impact less than 1 cent per $1,000 of assessed valuation. What is your pleasure? The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
David Allen, I would just point out that there's no change in the tax impact. The town has been setting aside $5,000 until last year.
Does the Budget Committee want to comment on this?
It was a nice day, but we did it. We had some discussions about how there's no real concrete plans with parks and recreation. It's pretty much what the majority of that discussion was on this article.
Can you speak up?
The discussion we had on this article, the majority of the discussion was about how there's no concrete plans for parks and recreation, a long term, no, nothing of that.
Okay, thank you.
You are correct, there are not any concrete plants. There are some asphalt plants. Because we would like to refug the ice rink and the basketball court. And we want to use 25,000 or possibly a little bit more of that to match with the federal grant, which I hope you will both support
That's a set report.
in upcoming articles in the second quarter.
Okay, Article 25. Seeing and hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Oh, you guys are finally doing it. Speaking of guys. Okay, so everybody should have their due. Okay, so all those in favor of Article 25, please raise your three voting cards. Okay, I think they're all counted. Okay, all those not in favor of Article 25, please raise a aye. I can tell it's just a aye. The vote for Article 26, yes 98, no 32. Article 26 passes as written. 25, sorry. So 25 passes as written. Okay, Article 26. By petition of 25 or more voters in the town of Barnstead, New Hampshire, to see if the town will vote to accept and sign the Federal Land and Water Conservation Grant Number 33-00740 for $75,000 for the purpose of maintaining and developing the Barnstead Recreation Area at 115 South Barnstead Road. It's actually in Barnstead, New Hampshire, not... Submitted by petition, not recommended by Selectmen 2 to 3, not recommended by Budget Committee 0 to 8, majority vote required. Okay, step up to the mic. You have to step up to the mic.
Suzanne Allison, I move that we accept this as written.
Step up to the mic, please. State your name.
Mary Winslow, I second.
Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Hear.
Hear, yeah. You go, Mike.
Better? I'm here to answer, May Todd. Okay, see the screen, so I'm gonna keep on on my nerves. Back up, please. Okay, so as you've heard when talking about the fire truck, grants take a lot of work. So I just want to walk us through a quick presentation, because we've put a lot of work into this grant, so I want to make sure you guys have a better understanding of what you're going to be voting for. So the place A for a park that we're hoping to accept a grant to build will be located in the green area, which is behind the library, backed by the ice rink. And the plan is for multiple forms of recreation for kids of all ages. So a few contacts. National Association of Home Builders reports that community playgrounds are one of the top five important amenities for homeowners. Small business owners consider relocating also playing outside. And residents who live near the play area get out, socialize more with the kids, get to get a more sense of community. So the grant details. The Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF, was established to fulfill a bipartisan commitment to safeguard natural areas, water resources, cultural heritage, and to provide recreational opportunities. Parks and Rec... Sorry, guys, I really get nervous too, please. Parks and Rec feels that people need a place to play, kids need a place to gather and get rid of some energy, we need to have more time outside, less time playing springs. And we feel this need for our children, for our grandchildren, for future children beyond. So we're thankful for the land conservation, for giving the opportunities to help build these places and to help safeguard them. So the period of our grant is October 1st through September 30th of 2024. And we can request a two-year extension, which we believe we will be doing. If it's approved. So some of the key points that I might look over on the grant. It is a match grant. I'm really sorry.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Yeah, not so thanks. Don't get too frustrated, you'll help me pretty. Thank you. Okay, so we can ask for a two-year extension, which we'll be doing. The match grants, dollar for dollar, which means the grant for $75,000, we will have to raise the same amount of money. So we have to come up with funds first. So we will get the money, and then we can submit for reimbursements. Reimbursements can get submitted by a 25% increment of the grant total. So any major deviance... Oh, sorry. Detailed record keeping is required for reimbursement. All of that will need to go through the town, so everything will be in the up and up. Approvals will need from the select board for specific amounts of money that are spent. So everybody will be, the select board will be involved with the planning and purchases also. Any major deviance from the original plan require review and reapproval. Due to the subscope changes since the original application was submitted, we will need to submit for formal addendum. The property has to remain and maintain public recreation area forever. Features and equipment will need to be maintained for the life expectancy of the item. So once reimbursement is received, so it doesn't matter if it's $10,000 or however much. Once we receive any reimbursement, the property is encumbered under federal law for the purpose of recreational use in perpetuity. The town is then responsible for continued stewardship. The town retains ownership, like the conservation property, and is responsible for maintaining the area in a safe and inviting usable condition. So our timeline. So our timeline will include a three-year timeline. Hope they all come up there, Kelly. So the first year, what we're hoping to do is work on the ice rink. It needs some new walls, it needs the surface to be redone. We would like to be a landscape architect and ward to help with the design. Purchasing of the long lead equipment, they're saying that something as simple as a slide can be at 18 monthly time right now. And then work on operating. So year two, we would work on the DES shoreline permit requirements. We've already received the permit. We'll do site prep, underground utilities, feature equipment installation, and landscaping. And then if needed, moving into a third year, we'll do additional feature equipment installation and finalize landscaping. Ongoing during this entire time will be fundraising, recruitment of volunteers, for equipment use, and material connections. So as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have to submit an addendum for the changes. So we met with, listened to concerns from different communities, different committees and wards of our town, and made some changes. So we removed some features that they felt were high maintenance, and we added some features then to incorporate children of different ages, like older children. So our key features of things that we want to do, this is subject to change. Again, we have to get reapproval, and then also work on outside. So repairs to, repairs to the ice rink. We often want to look into finding another use for the ice rink. So right now, it's empty except for in the winter. So if we can look into a surface that would be roller hockey or pickleball, something like that. So we're looking into different options to make more, better use of that. Kids' line of climbing wall, volleyball court, ping pong table, pavilions, and seating areas. So some smaller items, we'd like to stay fox, meditation labyrinth, intereducation, some music area, gardens, loose league play area, which parts play area. And to just kind of give you an idea of some of the visions that we have. So a slide built into a hill, there's two things so that it's safer. It makes it so that we don't have a fall hazard. And then it also makes the way of getting up to the slide a key part of play. So instead of just climbing a ladder, they can, on the hill, they can climb the rocks. So that becomes part of the play for the children. And then the loose league play area, which is the bottom, would just be like natural things. It's just going to encourage creativity, imagination. It's something easy to replace, if something, you know, the parts get taken or something. It's just nature's items, and nothing gets to be created with it. So funding. So the grant would be $75,000. So we would submit partial reimbursements to do off the project. $35,000 would come from our Parks and Recreation Reserve, which is Article 27, so that's the one coming up. And then the other $40,000 will come from cash donations. So we'll be reaching out to corporations, we'll be looking at doing monthly pledge donations in terms of keep income, or as a flow of donations coming in, along with cashier bar time donations, which we always welcome also. So any kind of donations, material, time, equipment, fees, and services. So these all come as a cash, with a cash value. So if somebody donates their time, or somebody donates a bath home, those things come with a cash value, and those will count towards our match donations. Also, we're doing fundraisers. We've had people inquire that their employees do matches for 501(c)(3)'s. And we have friends at Barnstead Parks Recreation, which is a 501(c)(3)'s. So they'll be able to do fundraisers, and you can take donations and be able to take advantage of those employer matches. So maintenance. Maintenance is a lifelong commitment once we accept this grant. Will be up for inspection every five years Will be up for inspection every five years by the National Park Services. They may inspect, they may not, but if they have five years, they can come and do an inspection. So for the planning stage, we want to work with low maintenance and environmentally friendly shrubs, plants, and trees. We're going to be conscious of the feature material and the longevity of it. And we'll consider the layout and the feature placement to make sure that the maintenance is as easy as possible. We are not going to make it to work in social posthumous, that we can't get along more. We're just, we're being very conscious of these decisions when we're building or recording a design process. So ongoing maintenance. So we anticipate after the park is built, for routine maintenance, we're going to have lawn care, park cleanup, and then inspections, just to make sure that everything's still safe in the playground. All the equipment's still standing strong, make sure to see what we might need for occasional maintenance. On the occasional maintenance, the things that we foresee will be painting in wood ceiling. So like on the pavilion, for example, if it has the wood faces, the wood pillars, it's going to be resurfaced. Tree trimming, trimming repairs, and then deep cleaning. So those will be on occasion. So our continued maintenance plan is, we'll have advanced planning and scheduling of commission members, volunteers, and volunteers for routine maintenance. So we want to plan ahead, we don't want to wait till the grass needs to be mowed to say, hey, can we get some volunteers? We want to look at a month, two months, the entire summer, and three, schedule. We'll get volunteers, get commission members, get people to commit so that this isn't falling at one person at the last minute to try to figure it out. We want to do advanced planning and scheduling for the occasional maintenance items. We will still have assistance from our garden club. We can do some fundraising for cage maintenance services if needed. And then there may be a time when we need to request additional maintenance fund in the piano budget if needed, depending on what happens. Volunteer engagement. We will partner with local business owners, community groups, and engaging skilled individuals to assist with providing labor for building and ongoing maintenance tasks. We've got friends at Parks and Recreation who will be helping us get volunteers. We've got the garden club who can help get volunteers and community volunteers themselves. We can get local business sponsors, maybe service opportunities for the schools. We already have lists of people that have come forward and said that they want to, they want to help build the park, they want to have their equipment for the park, so we've had volunteers coming forward. A lot, there's a lot of interest from the parents, like, oh, this would be great, we can come up and, you know, foot maintenance after it's open. So we do feel that there's a lot of people in the community that are willing to step forward to help us with this. We'll continue to discuss the opportunities, volunteer opportunities, as we follow a critical path schedule. And this will allow us to better plan what we're going to need volunteers for. So if we know that we're going to need volunteers for a specific task and we know the duration of it, we have a lot better luck of getting somebody to offer to help us. If we just say, hey, we need volunteers and we don't know what you're going to be doing or how long it's going to take, well, people don't want to step forward. And I don't blame them. But if we follow our critical path schedule with the design of the park and let people know what we need, we will keep going, step forward to fix it. So children need the freedom and time to play, play is not a luxurious necessity. So I hope now that you guys have a little bit more information on the grant, what it means to the commitment to the town, how Parks and Recreation plans on supporting the building of it, supporting the maintenance and afterwards. I hope that you guys will feel that.
I can be next. Get closer.
I know, but I can tell. Look your hand away from your mouth.
My voice usually carries a lot of the word. As much as this is a wonderful idea, it's outside of our own vote. Back in 2011, when we invented this commission, it has very little power. The power belongs to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen at this time adjourned not to support this, mine as a budget committee, and they have a better idea of what we can live with. I have the 2011 warrant that was approved by everybody. The commission shall not have the authority to apply or hold and dispose of any bill of personal property to make an contract to operate trade with any other governmental unit, pay facilities, or properties, or import trust or managed public properties. You know, and it goes on. It's here, very, very long, say it. My thing is, they've always known, what are we doing here? I'm done. Thank you.
Gail McCarty. So Parks and Recreation created the application we built up across, we did everything. Then we submitted that to the town, the town actually submitted the application for the grant and then received the grant. So Parks and Rec didn't actually enter into a contract or request the grant in our name and is requesting the town's name. At the time, the town went through the application, they felt that it's acceptable to ask for this grant and they proceeded to actually submit, because Parks and Rec does not have the authority to do so.
Should I respond to that, please? In 2020, the Board of Selectmen, myself as chair, signed the grant application. The information that was presented to the, that we signed was not what got finally presented to the Board of Selectmen. There was changes that the Board of Selectmen felt we were unable to support. And secondly, we were not made aware that there was a 25-year to life commitment on maintaining the facility. And that was a big concern to our board, which is why we did not support it.
Rebecca Kelsey. I just have two questions. One, if we've already, can you guys hear her?
No.
No.
If, if we've already accepted the grant, what does it mean if we're voting no? And then another question. If we're doing a $25,000 matching, can we clarify about volunteering? Is the volunteer hours and equipment being brought in if we're volunteering? Doesn't that go towards what the match is so that whenever we're talking about $75,000 coming from the town, how that could actually be volunteer and not cash, am I right?
So the select board signed the application to apply to the grant, not to accept the grant. So we haven't accepted it yet. That's what this vote is for right now.
If you had accepted the grant, until we actually submit for reimbursement, we are not locked into any commitment of the property to the, the grant company, the seller place, the conservation group. So if it is voted down, then it just, you let them know that we're not going to take the grant and that's the end of it. Again, it's harder to get approved for additional grants if, in the future, somebody else wanted to make another attempt at doing this, it may be harder to get that grant. Okay. So that's correct. So in-kind donations, so the $75,000 that we have to raise for the match does not have to be raised of $75,000 in cash. If somebody donates this equipment, that equipment has an hourly rate to it. We calculate what that is, if that would account for that cash value. So we have this survey done on the property that was done as a donation, so that was like a $3,000. That $3,000 that you would get applied towards our match, and it didn't cost us anything because it was done in kind.
I'm more in middle of semi-upriver property, we live across the street. We use the property a lot. It's, they're taking stuff out, there's only swings, and as somebody who who has small children and really wants things for the town, I really hope that the town will consider. Because if we tend to be the only people that are ever over there, there's not a whole lot of, there's, it's, they use the basketball courts a lot, there's kids that use the ice rink a lot, but the actual playground is not utilized as far as we see. We're there almost every evening in the spring and summer. And it's just not utilized as much, and I would love to see more of the town and the community using it. Maybe there are during the day, we tend to use it at night. But it would just be really nice to see more people over there using it, especially if somebody with really, really small kids.
Thank you.
Hi, John McPartney. My main concern is I haven't heard a figure, what would it cost to maintain this according to the standards of the grant? Forever in a long time, and volunteers come and go in this community? I know, I am one. What is the cost to maintain this? And if volunteers don't step up, is that an additional cost? Do we hire people? I personally don't want to have to pay this grant money back if we don't adhere to what they're asking.
Gail, do you have a? So if, if we're in violation of maintaining it into a inviting and usable environment, then the state steps in, and I have been talking with the grant officer and looking through documents, I haven't seen that there's anything that says we have to pay back the grant. The state will, it make us, they will enforce us to, to bring it up to par. So the lifeline, the rest of the equipment, so if we put in slides and we put in climbing wall, for example. So if they have a 25-year lifespan, once those items have deteriorated and they're, they're not being safe anymore, they can be taken out, they do not need to be replaced with another slide. We can just, as long as we keep the area invited in a play area, it doesn't have to have all of the equipment. It can be a field that's maintained with the swing set. It can be very simple, the 25 years, or, sorry, not the 25 years, the life of the equipment that we originally installed with the grant money, we have to upkeep for a lifetime of that. And then the property has to be maintained afterwards just as a right area. I think that was it.
Andrew Celeste, I just want everybody to know that the total proof cost is $150,000, is what that is for this project. The other thing, this is the notice of award right here. The grantee's name is New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. The town of Barnes, that will not own this place, that parcel of land, the state will have deed of rights to that land.
I'm sure. I'm waiting, waiting. My, my concern is that we're making it for 25 years. And the thing is that we don't know what that cost impact is going to be on us. And we're going to have another meeting next week. The thing is, we need to set up priorities. What do we, what can we ask taxpayers to take on as a responsibility financially? We have a big resource in Tia Sora, you know, there's a lot of things that the kids can do over there. I don't think we need another playground. My concern is that there's a lot of things that need to be addressed in this town in the future. And if we overburden our taxpayers with projects like this, a lot of other things might not get accomplished. Thank you.
John McPartney, so still, without an estimated cost of maintenance, I would encourage this body to vote no.
Emily Hayes, the question is, revolves around the fact that the property as a whole will be encumbered. How large is this property, does it include the land that the library is on?
Gail, can you answer that?
It does not include the land the library, it does not include the land the library is on. It will include the ice rink and the basketball court, because that is considered part of the rec area. And then right down to the, the big open area where the archery targets are. And then the land beyond that is conservation land, so that one is already there. So it's not part of ours.
Can you people hear that in the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Andrew Celeste, again, talking about maintenance. This is a worksheet that I was handed from Parks and Rec to the Board of Selectmen at one of the meetings. In it, they have composting toilets. Who's going to maintain those?
Those are my reitems that have been dropped. And we will continue with the toilet facilities that have been there for many, many years. They're now, I initiated the water article a few years ago to provide staffing for the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have approached the responsibility to this community with the idea that we would have a minimum amount of town tax dollars that would provide a core base that would allow us to participate to create recreational opportunities and recreational spaces. And that we would supplement that with a lot of volunteer time and, which is historically how the whole Parks and Recreation has operated. And with financial support from private sources. And that's how we operate. We purchased a tractor, which makes the clearing of the snow from the ice rink a doable task. And it's done, it was done without any, it was done with a significant contribution from private funds. And I went to the, the wall tank factory, dumped them in, asked them for a couple thousand dollars. They said, we can't risk it to the community, but we're going to give you more than we ask. I've raised $400 million in grants and contracts in my professional lifetime. I've never been given more than that. The concern about the maintenance is a fair concern. And I think it's being exaggerated. Gail mentioned what was involved in the maintenance. Going along, maintaining the shrubbery, the trees, and, uh, for 20 years. And, you know, restoring some work. We think that we can do that with volunteers. I've heard the question asked, how do we know there are going to be volunteers in 25 years? Well, I can't answer 25 years, but I can tell you that one of our best sources of volunteers is new people moving things to town, looking for an opportunity to get to know the community and eager to contribute to their new community. And I would ask all of these years, are you raising your children, your grandchildren to have a spirit of contributing to the community that we pay for? That would be a big part. The question about having the land set aside for recreation purposes in perpetuity. Number one, the Conservation Commission sets off site land for conservation purposes in perpetuity. And they don't have the power to, they let just slightly have the authority to do that. And we, as the Parks and Recreation Commission, do not. And as Gail mentioned, that gives why, because of the selectors, they can be counted. They were negatively by the selectors, by the budget committee. Unfortunately, originally, we were told it was not, did not seem to go to the budget committee. I made a mistake. The original draft of the grant said accept as by the grant, and it didn't have a dollar. That's what needed to go to the budget committee. But as I'm writing the last draft, I think, you know, let's be as transparent as we can and tell the county voters how much money it is for voting. Well, as soon as I did that, then it had to go to the budget committee. And the time constraints were such that our town's administrator, who worked hard to juggle a million things at once, was not able to give us the heads up that the budget committee would be voting on it. So they voted on it with no information available.
Call the question, please.
Okay, the question has been called. Is four people in mind? So whoever called the question, would you at least stand up and tell me who you are? Who called the question?
I'll call it.
No, somebody called it.
Tim Conrad.
I called it. Tim Conrad. Yeah, that's fine with me. Whatever is best for the moderator.
Thank you, Tim. I know, we need to know for the record.
Sure, no, that'll be fine. Go for it.
Okay, who seconds the calling of the question? Sean. All those in favor of calling the question, we have one, two, three people and we have one person up here that would like to speak and then we'll vote on the question. Okay, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
We call the question with no further discussion?
There's four people in line and it's fair to have them have their chance to speak. Go ahead, Alan. Make it quick.
Alan Glashman, Nicholas Circle. What I was going to say, it seems that it has been covered just a few moments ago. The bottom line, the way I see it is that it, on the surface, it's a wonderful idea to have a great playground and all of that in this town. However, as a member of the budget committee, and I was at all of the meetings, when the gentleman right here to my left presented his position with the, to the budget committee, there was no detail provided other than a verbal detail. And as we now see, there are all kinds of information up on the, on the screen here. However, there was nothing like that for even, for us to even consider the, this warrant article. So in my opinion, it doesn't, it's not something that the town is ready to be voting for, given the fact that there are a lot of questions that need to be asked. And maybe for next year, it might be something that can be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moderator?
I'm sorry.
Just so everyone knows, I'm the person who voted against it on the board's selection. The other members of the board thought it would be a better idea to present it to you, the voters, and let you do the dirty work. I was in favor of beheading this thing way back. This is probably one of the best intended, most ill-conceived articles that you're ever going to encounter. There's a lot of things that haven't been said that I'd like to present to you. One is in the Paxton Rec Committee's own brochure, is that this is a plan for multiple forms of recreation for innocent residents of all ages. BX. This is designed for four, five, and six-year-olds. And by their own admission, the pictures throughout this brochure show you children using this. Now, I suppose having a section of the Paxton Rec area designed specifically for children of that age is just not the worst thing in the world. But they want us to pay $150,000 for the privilege of putting out four or five chunks of butt log, truckload of rocks, and three or four old concrete culverts for $150,000. That is so we can get back $75,000. I don't see the economy in that. Everything that's been said here is, is pretty much correct. This was one man's dream to leave his legacy to the town of Barnstable. I don't think that should happen. If he's adamant about his legacy, let him fund the thing. Because it's based down on volunteers and cookie sales. And that is no way to fund any program. Thank you.
Suzanne Allison, I'll try to keep this brief. I feel differently than most of the people who've spoken so far. I think that, I think this was pretty well thought out. Maybe it was not presented as well as it should have been. I think there is been, has been transparency. I think questions have been answered. I do believe if you build it, they will come. And when they come, they will love it and then we will get volunteers. I feel that the library being the center of town, next to the ice rink, next to the archery, next, you know, is a place to continue to build on lovely center of town. And it builds community. When people get out and meet their neighbors, they're much more likely to come together when there's problems in town or when there's disasters. And this is a way to do that. And for the, I think, small amount of money compared to a million-dollar fire truck, which I support, don't get me wrong, I would support it. I think it's, it's worth it. So I'm, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Gail McCullough. So in regards to the property ownership, I received some information from Phil Gages, which is LWFC, after our neighbor, and I hadn't asked about the ownership because I wasn't exactly sure how that worked either. So I'd like to reiterate what he said. Once town receives reimbursement, property is encumbered under federal law for the purpose of public outdoor recreation in perpetuity. Town is then responsible for continued stewardship. The bounds of the encumberment area apply to the total viable outdoor recreation area of property. This is not an easement, but functions legally like an easement. The town retains ownership and control. The town must record a notice of grant requirements with the Alnap County Registry of Rights upon project completion. So according to this, where I asked for it in terms that weren't a lot of legal that you had to sort through, he says the town retains ownership. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then also just to clarify the, what Ed had just said about the, the age requirements. So yes, when we originally created the design, it was geared towards children. But this was when the presentation and I said that we had listened to committees and we had listened to boards, we had taken our concerns and their ideas to heart and we had made some changes. Then, you know, we've added, we're running add the roller hockey or the pickleball. Those are for older kids. Right now, our ice rink, the older kids actually love playing hockey in the winter. So if we get that to where the surfaces that can do roller hockey, that's older kids. Volleyball, that would be for older kids. They can do bad bat, badminton, other things also. A pink mom table. So we are trying to incorporate some things for the older kids along with doing picnic pavilion, which will, people can come in with families for picnics, they can do gatherings, family reunions, birthday parties. So it just kind of gives another option there for people that are not, young children, to take advantage of the space. Thank you.
Okay, you guys ready to vote?
Yes.
David, the question has been called and there's no comment. Nope? No, the question has been called. And everybody's been very patient about this discussion. All those in favor of Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed Article 26, please say no.
No.
It's opposed, but the noes haven't. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of repairing existing features and adding new recreational features to the Parks and Rec area and to authorize the withdrawal of $35,000 from the Parks and Rec facility capital reserve. This is a special warrant article for RSA 32:3, Roman 6, 5%D and RSA 32:7, Roman 5. Recommended by the selectmen 4-1, not recommended by the budget committee 2-6, tax rate impact zero or less, majority vote required. What is your question? The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is not going to be difficult. I just wanted to highlight that, that Gail McCullough, as our Parks and Rec coordinator, did an incredible job. And it's hard to get up here in front of everybody and go through that process. So if you participate in anything in Parks and Rec, look for Gail because she's there.
So what does the body want to do? Do you want to hear these people in line or do you want to vote?
Yeah.
Oh, let's vote.
So who called the question? Sean. Did anybody second it?
No.
All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
You guys are close, but the ayes haven't. Sorry about that, guys. All those in favor of Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's really close, so I need the supervisor to do the next one. All those in favor of Article 27, please raise your green card. Okay, if you count it, all the noes, please raise your green card. I did count it. Okay, I'm going to hand. Madam Moderator, while they're coming, could I make a point of order, Mary Wunsle? Could all future communication, even regards to calling the question, be done here at the microphone, please? Thank you. Article 27, yes, 74, no, 43. The article passes. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Farmstead School Board for the purpose of purchasing the Farmstead School District's own land on Henanada Road at map 7 lot 65-1, containing 54.635 acres, recommended by selectmen 5-0. What is your question? The article has been moved down to second place. I need a second.
I have a number of things to say, Chris Furtney, and I hope people will take notes because it's important you know the whole story. First of all, number one, the assessed value of this piece of property, although it's not mentioned, and I have one other thing, first of all, Madam Chairman, or is it Chairman? What do you mean? Moderator, is, there's no mention here whether this is a majority vote or a two-thirds vote. It's not listed. I'd like to make a amendment right now that it's a two-thirds vote because it's not listed. I don't know if there's any rule on that, but you didn't put it in, admit, you didn't put it in this. It's missing. Doesn't say whether it's a majority vote or two-thirds.
At the time this article was made, we did not have a purchase price with the school district. And it is a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Doesn't say that here. So my understanding is, for the fine people, there is a purchase price, approximately the assessment is $318,000. Now, that might, there might be some wiggle room with that, but my math tells me that's about 50 cents a thousand, or approximately $100 that your taxes would go up if they choose not to dip into an ETF or some other plan.
To be clear, if you look at the bottom information on the slide, the funds come from ARPA, which is federal government. It's used for specific purposes and cannot be used to supplement the budget.
And has it?
Nothing to do with the unanticipated amounts.
Has those funds been approved by ARPA?
Yes, and we have them in our possession.
Okay, good. That answers one of my questions. Number two, this land sits on the second largest aquifer in the state of New Hampshire. 12 acres of the 40, 54 acres is wetlands, could not even be built on it. The other, from what I understand from a couple of property owners that live above them, you can see the water bubble up on this aquifer, right to the surface. Very concerned that we would consider, because the plan is, for anybody who doesn't know it, is to build a new DPW building on some portion of that, based on the needs that I guess the current DPW building or buildings do not provide to the road agent and his corrupt. I have just recently talked to the chief of the fire department and asked him, because somebody else pointed out to me that for many years, they did fire, putting out fires as practice training, and they were using items such as A-triple-F and other chemicals to put out the fire, which, since the current footprint of the fire department is also on that aquifer, they, no one can do that because of the chemicals to solve, the other things that are associated with putting out fires for training. So they use something now because they recognize they're sitting on top of an aquifer. My real concern is that building, first of all, purchasing it is going to raise our taxes. Or, no, take it back, it's not going to raise our taxes, we're going to go to the ARP. My real concern is that they're not making any more land in America, and they're definitely not making any more aquifers. And we've already made the mistake with what we did to the lot later, and what we hopefully will not do to this aquifer in terms of just putting something there that could potentially be detrimental to that aquifer. And I don't think anybody wants that to happen. If the school board is smart, they will turn that into a New Hampshire forestry or whatever, and that's their debate for later on. We don't pay any taxes on that now, so we're not losing anything because the school owns it, but at the same time, another hundred dollars, and then we haven't even talked about what's it going to cost to clear land and put up a new de-ducting building that is desired by, I believe, some of the people in the town. I'll just take a wild guess and say it's a $500,000 building all day long. Maybe it's a little less, maybe it's a little bit more. But my point is taxes, we need to, we need to keep our taxes where they are. There's going to be a lot of money next Saturday on something that covers 80% of our budget. This is only 20% of our budget. So I think we should be very concerned that however we acquire this land, we're then going to want to build on it and potentially be detrimental again to an aquifer that doesn't just affect us, the town of Onsted. This aquifer goes through, out of how many towns in the state? Thank you very much.
There is no tax impact whatsoever at this point in time that is considered a location as a possible location for the highway department. The school district plans on selling this land. If it doesn't go to the town, it could potentially go to a developer who's going to build homes, which is going to impact our school system and our town resources. We're potentially looking at saving money by getting the gravel out of it for town use rather than having it trucked in. So there is savings as far as if the timber is, is removed and sold, that would benefit the bottom budget for the town. Again, this is something in the future. It's going to hold the town, that only the town can develop this land for town use only, rather than have it go to a private developer that could put 10 or 15 homes on it. As of the time when the property was sold, when the school district looked at that property, they were going to be building a middle school, elementary school there. So yes, there was going to be building plans for that site, which is no longer happening. So this is, in a way, protecting part of the acreage. It was strictly, if it's going to be used, would be used for the town shed, for the town shed purposes. That is it. The land will remain undeveloped apart from town use.
Rep. T B? I'm a budweiser of this property, and some of you folks may want to hear a little history of the property. I just heard that you said the lumber value would be something valuable to the town of Onsted, but there's no lumber value on it because of the strip, but the school bought the piece of property. The other little pile of history about this piece of property, it is a wonderful, beautiful piece of property, has water, aquifer, it's just gorgeous, it's getting gravel, sand. The point is, when the school bought it, I was against it. And when they bought it, I got, I myself and 10 other landowners brought a lawsuit against the school district, and we were fortunate, we won the lawsuit. Part of the lawsuit is that the property was never supplemented properly. There's actually land on the other side of the river, which the school district decided that they were just going to forfeit, they didn't care who wanted the piece, the piece property on the other side of the river, so they decided that it was, whoever wanted to fight for it, they could have it. And it was illegal subdivision. I got that in the lawsuit, definitely won. The other thing is in the lawsuit that Mr. James, which is unfortunately not here anymore, was a landowner, he was very detrimental, it blew a case, by what can be built on that piece of property? The piece of property, if you were able to build a big building on it and things, it has the potential of actually sliding down the hill because the sand and the gravel is there. And it's not a favorable lot to build, actually buildings on, because the water content is so high at the top of the hill, it actually, you go, the lower you go, the deeper you go for water, the higher you go, the water's on the surface. It's a unique piece of property, it's just unbelievable, but if you can build houses on that with the, with what you have for regulations for the planning board and things, it's pretty near impossible to get a house built on there if you don't go with all these real special things to get it done. So I've just warned the people, you can do what you want on this article, but I can tell you right now, there's going to be problems, and no matter what we do, if we even try to dig gravel and step out of the other town, we're going to have to go through the permitting process through the state and things, and there's going to be a lot of issues with that piece of property prior to exiting. So, I agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Barbara Palmsbaugh, White Oak Grove. My question is, is I heard that we have a purchase agreement for $314,000, is that correct?
We do not have a full purchase and sale agreement, and the amount would be $318,000, which is the assessed value.
My question to the Select Board is, the townspeople have already purchased this property via, whether it be through the school, country, or through the town, we have already paid taxes on this piece of property. Now, why are we having to spend more dollars to reacquire that when other monies, these monies could be appropriated to other one-time spending?
The school district is the official owner of the property, not the town.
Tim Conrad. Does anybody know how much the highway department has of the land right now? Roughly?
I believe about 1.3 acres, and I believe they're at the max of any type of expansion.
So 55 acres would be more than enough for the DPW?
Correct.
The other question was, as I see this, this total plan, it's kind of a collaboration between the town and the school. If the town buys this land for $318,000 and gives it to the school, the school is going to make an offer on the Maple Street Church, which is across from the, the Onsted Country Store for future expansion, that I read. Right, that's exactly right, but that's contingent upon what we do today.
Not necessarily.
But it could be. So to buy that, that school, they would have a piece of property across, we could have two buildings for the school and let them put a tunnel or an overdash. Just my feelings and my comments, I'm against this proposal.
George Kraus. I have a lot of comments to make about this, but I'll try to boil it down to just a couple. The first comment that was made by Diane was that the school district owns it. I beg to differ. The residents of the town of Onsted approve the money for the school district to purchase it for gallons. The town of Onsted, the residents own it.
Yes.
All right, so this is, in my estimation, worth one, looking to try to pay for it twice. And I appreciate that the money is going to come in from the grant process, and that makes it a little more palatable, but I don't agree with your comment. Personal opinion. Secondly, the whole valley, that, that Big River Valley, which, for those that don't know, New Road, which runs right down through it, and on the 126th side, for the past 70 years that I know of, that has been gravelled by so many companies, and, and companies that have purchased from landowners. And it starts right at the town line, where the state has property, where they have gravel operation going on, comes down through the Russell area, where there are two separate operations, the sand and gravel, comes down through, through the area that is Sam Cock Road, and there are four operations there, Angeline being the largest, and I got to tell you, the door there, which was the Guy Black property, which for those who have been around more than a decade, that, that was, that's been heavily all off down to Boston, it's practically gravel every five days a week at least, and it is completely reached terrace by all that sand and gravel that's gone out of it. Then we drive down to TD's, and they had sand and gravel, water issue going on there for many years, back when the road was put over Park and Mountain. It was all over there by little trucks all the lots of times, but that was what built the road. So it's a tremendous area of sand and gravel. The town of Onsted needs a lot of gravel. You don't live on a dirt road, God bless you, because those of us that live on dirt roads, I can only tell you that this year has been probably one of the worst, and I'm, George did a great job last fall, and then we got raining and washed everything out, and the roads have been horrendously poor since then. It won't be any better until about June, because it's going to take him that long to get it repaired there. But I, I think the issue here is, one, the town needs that property. We already own it, but if we can't, if it would take that, the residents should be able to say, okay, we're going to take that off the balance sheet of the school district and put it on the balance sheet for the town. But I guess that's not that simple. But the issue is that it's property that should be utilized. As far as putting that highway device down there, like our roads, our infrastructure is in terrible condition, whether it be highways, whether it be the fire, we put a little bad aid, bought, built it with a police station, so they're pretty well set for now, and the town hall needs some work. So I mean, we've got plenty of places where we need to spend money, and if we can get this and get it so that we can utilize the sand and gravel and, and move forward, I think it's a good idea.
Andrew Sylvester, for the committee chair. City operation budget, there's $125,000 between crush gravel and winter sand. So if you look long-term as to what you could pull out for winter sand and crush gravel, you could reduce that by estimating $100,000 fully, all of it, just a name budget. Just a long-term.
Doug Darrow, I live on Shaker Corner Road. Yeah, listening to this discussion, we're getting down to the fact that when we were talking about, the first fellow who's up here about the Lock Lake River is being built on this aquifer, which extends this way all the way up through Center Onsted into parade. In 2006, we passed a ordinance in this town, and it was really questionable whether or not we were actually able to do this, and we did do it, and it's been a long time since the time we passed it. And it was to protect the groundwater. I mean, I can understand when it comes down to the economy, to, you know, gravel pit, sand for, for the roads. But I think it should be considered, and I'm sure if we're smart enough, we would consider what we have in this town, in that aquifer. It's one of the biggest aquifers that's in this part of the state, and it's, it's probably more valuable than what you really think it is, because the way we're destroying the groundwater as it's going on now, it's questionable, you know, why even Pennsyl took Lock Lake Water Company. It was a long-term, forecasted plan of that, I, that's what my feeling is. And then, again, following up on this, I have to go back on it myself and read this, is that in 2008, we amended that article in town meeting to give rights of nature. And what does that mean? It's become a real issue to people talking about it all over the world now. And we were one of the first people, the same time when Ecuador wrote into their constitution to protect the rights of nature, is when we passed our ordinance in 2006, same, same year. I know this economy running the town, and we can, we can compromise certain things, but we have to, we have to consider and give it really good thought, because I really care about the kids and what they were trying to do, that's what I was trying to say. The only thing I was concerned about that, that article was what the town's liability is. You can talk anything about liability, so, so anyway, it's all, it's all a liability in one way or another. If we have to pay for it, or if it's going to affect us in the long run. But thank you very much. Thank you very much, what you can and will do.
Kate Clary. I just want to provide a little bit of context from, I've, I've been on the Space Needs Committee for the past couple of years. I withdrew because of family stuff, so you won't see me out right now, but have been on it for, for a while, and I can provide kind of context for that committee's perspective, which it was that committee's recommendation to the school, it was that townspeople recommendation to the school that this property should, that this action should be taken, right? And, and kind of what we're talking about is two different buckets of things. On one bucket, we have who should own this piece of property, and then in the other bucket is what should be done with it. And I can't necessarily speak to what should be done with it, but what I can say is that going through this Space Needs Committee process, where we're looking at all sorts of stuff, not just this building, but the resources that the school has, we strongly felt as townspeople that that was a resource that the school had that they were not using and that was certain. and that was serving no benefit, but could be a benefit to the town as we all owned it. I really agree with what Mr. Kraus was saying. So we felt that doing this benefits kind of that bottom line for the school so that we can, they're not sitting on a resource that they're not using, but at the same time, the townspeople can use it and have access to it, however that shapes up to be, right? That's that other bucket that I can't talk to. So I just wanted to provide that context.
Linda Vermonta. Are there any other town-owned properties that could be utilized for the DPDW? I know that they, they really don't have a lot of space to expand over there, but is that an alternative, other than this in-and-out, um, property?
Nothing really that would be on that scope and size and plus to have the ability, um, to have, get, reduce gravel. And one of the reasons we really looked at that is because that area is an area rich in gravel. The select board approached the school board probably about 11 or 12 years ago, maybe longer, um, to let them have the access to build and access for, to use it to help reduce gravel costs. And as Andy, um, had stated, we're spending a lot of 145,000 a year just for gravel and sand costs. Again, the town shed would have a small footprint. It's, uh, we, we haven't even looked at what type of building would even be going there. This is something that is for future development. The rest of the land is going to remain undeveloped apart from what the town would actually use for it. So for people to go in and think we're just going to clear the entire thing and it's just going to be the town shed, no, that is not the case. It would specifically be what, the town, um, you know, road agent? And, and obviously I didn't know that the trees were on a strip. If I'd known that, I would have made that statement, but that is one of the main reasons to look for future development for this town, because as we grow, we outgrow our footprint and the town shed is at that point where they are over growing that footprint again.
So one of my other concerns is this aquifer. I mean, we have such problems over at Lock Lake, I'm part of a Pennch water system. And, um, the cost for water has increased tremendously over the last 15, 20 years. So when I hear that there's an aquifer that could be compromised, has the board taken a look at what we could do to take and mitigate problems with this aquifer?
That is something, as we look at the land, obviously we're going to be taking a look at for any type of development. Um, again, I'm not sure the exact acreage for the aquifer, but putting the building as far away from the aquifer is what could be done, obviously that was what we've done. But again, we have no plans right now, even for a town shed, this is just specifically for the land. That's it, that's what the extent of this article is. It's not for the town shed on, it's not even to strip the land, it's nothing like that. It is strictly just a purchase and sale agreement between the town and the school district.
Kevin, just, um, so.
Speak into the microphone.
So, if this passes, the town will be able to have the,
Speak into the microphone.
What have the opportunities to expand the highway department? At the same time that 318,000 is coming from the town, go to the school, the school has the money, that 318,000 buy that church next door, that has the parking lot that we use all the time. The teachers use it, we're using it this morning too, so that would be a big advantage for the school.
Yeah, I agree.
I was gonna say, once, once the property is sold, the town has no say what the school will use the money for, that is up to them.
But.
That can, it's a question that can be asked to them next week.
Okay.
Attorney Ed, and a question, what would happen to the property, uh, on 28th and Ruby Hill Road if things do go, go into top?
Would it ever really be sold?
It would be sold. And the value of that, I think, would be much higher.
I think it was right around the same, 18, 19, or something like that. Yeah, like, because we don't have the section on it, so. But would she definitely want to keep that?
Town would keep that, these would not, would not want it.
Carolyn from Anacostas, I just have a quick question. The ARPA, like you said, has money made available to towns for specific purposes. Is that a specific purpose of just buying the land or for using it for the DPDW, for the highway department? It is for purchasing, just purchasing?
Yes. Well. Eventually for building, but whether the funds will be available in future years is something that federal government would dictate.
But would we get the funds now to, to buy the property or would we be?
We have, we already have the funds to buy the property, yes. As far as developing it further, that would be something that would come before this body, um.
So there's no caveat on those funds, it says you have to build this property if you get this fund? You, you're allowed to just buy a land? Okay.
Kate Clary, I'd like to call in a question.
Second. You have your microphone, second to the right. I'll cover it. Phil Henry, I second that. I'm in favor of voting on Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so now this is when you vote regarding Article 28. So all those in favor of Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose Article 28, please say no.
No.
Can't hear you.
I'm talking to the supervisors. Okay. Now, all those in favor of Article 28, please raise your cards. Okay, put your cards down. All those against Article 28, please raise your card. So the results for Article 28, yes, 61, no, 58. Article 28 passes. Go ahead, Hillary.
Hi, Hillary Henry, I would like to restrict Article 22 through 28 for reconsideration.
So we have a motion and a tagging to restrict reconsideration of Articles 22 to 28. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 29. The town will vote to authorize for this alignment to convey a small portion of town-owned land at map seven, lot five, to a budding owner, Stephen Winchester, at map 20, lot 20, point 15 of an acre, and to the Center Barnstead Church parsonage at map 20, lot 19, point 41 of an acre, for the purpose of adjusting the lot line to be both rear and sideline setback requirements of both the buddies. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero, majority vote required. What is your pleasure? Article has been moved and signed it, is there any discussion? Harry and Steve Nutt, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to discontinue completely a portion of Dam Site Road for the purpose of completing the road reconstruction for order of the DES. The proposed closure will be at map 39, lot 46, to the intersection of Emerson Drive for a distance of 75 feet. Recommended by selectmen, five to zero, what is your pleasure?
I will to, uh, accept that 30 is read.
The article has been moved and signed it, is there any discussion?
Ms. Moderator, we'd like to allow Aaron Dara to please come up to be able to speak to this.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Aaron Dara, I'm a bright angle engineer, and I'm a civil engineer working for the Barnstead. Actually, the best way to, uh, talk that, I'm working for the town of Onsted. And we've been looking at an issue regarding water quality in the vicinity of Emerson Lane and Dam Site Road and how the water quality is impacting, uh, wetlands and, and Lock Lake. Uh, we've been looking at different options on how we can address the problem. Uh, there has been a letter of deficiency issued by the Department of Environmental Services, which, um, is really what's forcing us to, uh, do this work. Basically, this area here is Dam Site Road. It's a little hard to see, and this is Lock Lake and this is Emerson Lane. Right here, we have Route 28. This is Danbury Road and then we have Bradford Lane. Just to help orient everybody to the area that we're looking at. The, uh, Department of Environmental Services has enacted essentially an enforcement action with concern about sediment from the dirt roads in this area washing out into an adjacent intermittent stream and into Lock Lake. So we've been looking at how can we address this issue? There are problems with road width and right-of-way. Generally speaking, one of the first things you want to do with roads is have ditches. And unfortunately, in this area, we're very restricted as far as area and, um, elevation, uh, it's very built up through here and there's not a lot of space. So we, as part of, um, this plan, and I'm keeping it a little bit from this because this, we're in our, it's part of the overall plan. We're going to be looking at enacting, uh, implementing a more comprehensive, uh, stormwater treatment to deal with runoff and the quality of runoff in this area on Emerson Lane. And then we were looking at another contributing area, um, Dam Site Road. Um, paving and putting in a stormwater system is, is an investment. It, it's a lot of money. And we're looking at how we can address the concerns from the DES as cost efficiently as possible. How can we, how can we mitigate the runoff? How can we maintain safe traffic? And how can we, um, do all of this with consideration to the taxpayers' dollars? So that's how we came up with what we are looking to do now. The proposal would consist of taking 75 feet that starts at the intersection of Bradford Lane, Danbury Road, and Dam Site Road. And it'll go down 75 feet to the intersection of 133 Dam Site Road, which is the house that's right on the corner in between, uh, Dam Site Road and Bradford Lane. The access to all the houses in this neighborhood will not, uh, be changed. They will maintain their existing access. A truck turnaround for the cloud trucks will be installed at the 133 driveway. There will also be a truck turnaround at the, um, top of the hill because Bradford Lane is actually a private road that town maintains and is at this location. Uh, the benefit of doing this work is to, um, address a location, to address a location that has been, that has washed out many times. This section of road has a grade of approximately 16%. Typically speaking, a maximum grade is 10%. I realize that we're in New Hampshire and there's a lot of roads that are a lot steeper and windier, um, due, you know, just to the age of our infrastructure. But when you get above 10%, you experience a lot more runoff. You are prone to have a lot more erosion and off-site sedimentation. So we were thinking about paving this section of road, improving the connectivity. And that is something that we can look at, but it's going to cost a lot of money. Just to realign that intersection, we're going to be looking at spending easily upwards of 125,000 to 150,000 dollars. Uh, because there's other issues with this intersection. We have issues with the right-of-way, we have, um, alignment issues. It's a very poor sight distance, if any of you have driven up here. When you go to the end of Dam Site Road and you want to take a left, which is what most people do, but, or if you want to take a right, either way, it's very difficult to see if there are vehicles coming in your direction. And then you really have to kind of go fast because you're stopped at a very steep grade and you have to turn one way or the other. So for us to really address this intersection and to keep it, we're going to have to invest some money. We're going to have to address the right-of-way, we're going to have to, we're, we're, we have, it'd be a significant infrastructure project and it can be done. But if we take this approach, we're addressing a section of road that has had, experienced numerous accidents. More than a road agent has told me about an experience where they actually tipped a truck, um, on an icy day. There is, uh, there's, there's a lot of issues here. So by eliminating this section of road and restoring it to a vegetated state, uh, we're going to address the issue of the unsafe intersection. And we're also going to allow for a decrease in sediment and runoff into Lock Lake at this location. The approximate cost of doing this work in comparison, to try to keep it, you know, apples to apples is far as reference point. We're closer to a $35,000 price point for this versus 125, 150, maybe more, maybe less, we haven't really done a full engineering design, but taking a look at preliminary options, I can tell you it'll well into the six figures for doing that work. And we have a lot of other things that we, that need to be addressed. Like with everything, there's pros and cons, but it's our opinion that this will help take steps to addressing the, um, current, uh, letter of deficiency, the current concerns of the DES regarding the runoff as cost efficiently as possible, while also promoting, you know, public safety and access in this area. So I think that essentially summarizes this. Okay, so this is a little bit more of a close-up. This is Bradford Lane. This little pay cash area is the area that would be discontinued. And in the future, how we see that being discontinued is with a, uh, herbaceous vegetation like a grass and shrubs. I know that there are concerns about, um, connectivity, you know, being able to access amenities at Lock Lake for people up here, um, we, you know, we can look at maintaining a pedestrian path, perhaps a bike path, so kids don't have to go up to Route 28 to get to the pool. kids don't have to go up to Route twenty-eight to get to the pool, which we will, looking at that, but it would be permanently closed to vehicles. And I will be here to answer any questions as appropriate. Thank you.
And just to make clear, the monies that we have set aside over the past few years total five hundred eight thousand five hundred and four dollars for the project.
I live up on Bradford Lane, and shutting off Dam Site would prevent us from having more than one point of entrance and egress into our neighborhood. It would require us to have to go out onto twenty-eight to go anywhere, not just the amenities in Lock Lake, anywhere. And everybody else in the colony has some other, you know, way of accessing, even coming to town. But the way this warrant article was written, it says to, you know, discontinue completely a portion of Dam Site Road for the purpose of completing the road construction per order of DES. Closing this off because of the issues that people have had for the unsafe intersection is not a DES issue. That is more of a town issue. So I think that should be something that is addressed separately. In addition, having conversations with Erin and also a gentleman from DES, it was explained to me that the DES side believes that eighty to eighty-five percent of the runoff is coming from Emerson, so fifteen to twenty percent is coming from Dam Site. Erin said it's closer to two-thirds coming from Emerson and one-third coming from Dam Site. But with those numbers, the majority of it is coming from Emerson. So what I'm asking is that we perhaps change the wording on this. Let's put in the drainage that needs to be done on Emerson and see what the results are from that before we just do a knee-jerk reaction of closing off that intersection. Yes, it is a bad intersection, but again, I use coming up twenty-eight to turn onto Danbury Road would be my only option to get home. And the way people drive on twenty-eight, it's a hazard for those of us who live there who want to have an alternate option. And again, there is the question of accessing the rest of the amenities. But I just ask that, my request is that the article be recorded to allow for the drainage repairs to move forward on Emerson and Dam Site, and that closing of the road is tabled until the results of the new drainage be evaluated. Then after that, we can determine if the repairs were sufficient and DES approves it, or ultimately we do need to work for it personally on that.
So are you saying that you want to amend the article?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So do you have a second? Could you step up to the mic and say something?
Toby Lowery.
Okay, and saying what you got to do.
I'd like to amend it for...
No, no, no. She's already put a motion on the floor to amend it. So you're here to say that you're seconding. I let you come in front of the woman that she... I know, it's getting, it's getting long, everybody's getting tired.
Hi, I'm Dawn Lane. I live actually at one Emerson, and everybody mistakes my house for being on Dam Site. So all of this runoff, I'm actually the house that gets wiped out every time, everything happens, and then it comes across the streets and I make at my neighbor's house. So I'm the one that has to constantly retrench the roadways in front of my house. I demand for a tractor to get all of the gravel out of my driveway every time.
All right.
But my point is, this is not a good solution for what you're trying to fix or accomplish. This is not going to help the drainage at all. There is very little limited drainage actually coming down the hill. So this is totally just going to fix the broken road.
So it's a bad intersection?
It is a rough intersection, I'll give it that, but it's one that is pretty unnecessary. That's all. And I just want to make sure people realize, this is not going to accomplish what you're saying, and while it may be necessary, it cuts off their access for no good purpose.
Toby Lowery, seventy-one Bradford Lane. I've been around here for about thirty years, but I had the opportunity of meeting the people that lived in this community before it became full season. That road was never designed nor the traffic on that road, or any road here at Lock Lake, for core season traffic. You're trying to fix a problem that is not fixable by just doing this. I believe this shouldn't. But if you run into a study, study the whole lake. I mean, the lake is broken, and I voted since I'm standing. I can remember walking across the lake with a stork, and I was still two feet under the water. Now it's just high, all right? In front of the dam, it used to be twenty-two feet deep. It's fifteen feet deep now. It's not just a problem at Emerson and Dam Site. It's the whole issue of water runoff. Steve Jones is here today to explain a piece on the study on the entire length of that and things like that. It's not the goal, it's not even the Lock Lake. But if you do this, it really needs to be planned out. I've been talking to construction projects all my life. For me, I think that the real simple on the Dam Site thing is take part of the hill out with permission from Lock Lake and make that level going down to the field where the orange field is. Let the water flow down there. Fix Emerson. It's a real easy fix. The town needs grabbing sand. If you're digging on the road, it's going to pop out. That is, you're going to spend the money, you know, if the road agent was here, which he should be, to be able to plan far better than to fix it, and it all, we could sit here and ask questions, we can't. Therefore, I don't think we should vote for that. I just didn't think it was a roadie, they'd ease.
The roadie, I don't think I need this. The roadie can play it all, he's in the process of fixing a fourteen-foot sinkhole, so he's in a pretty important place. I agree.
I get it, but because of his importance in this project, I don't think we should vote on this one. Come up with a knee-jerk, let's go on it next time. So I don't know how to present that, but I don't think it should be voted on.
Well, then, when it comes to vote, then think about how you want to vote. I'm not going to tell you how to vote either, but Erin could come up with...
No, Erin's got a lot of work.
I know, and I'm going to say if you would let her answer some questions that you folks have.
Okay. So I think that there are a lot of valid points that have been brought up. There is a more comprehensive issue, and we're looking at doing things a little out of time. This is something that right now, though, the town is under an enforcement action, such a DES to address. And I think it's really important to emphasize that this is not, that the closure of the road is part of the project. I wouldn't say it's the most important, I wouldn't say it's the least important. There is clearly a problem on Emerson Lane and Dam Site Road, and that is a very substantial part of this project. What we are really looking to do is invest the majority of the capital into constructing a improvement to the road that will address this ongoing issue with stormwater runoff. I have been observing the site now since two thousand eighteen, and I have witnessed the flooding events that happened described, and I emphasize what all of these people are going through. I understand the just, you know, the lack of continuity, that the sediment, I have observed an increase in sediment just in the past five years. But we can do it a little bit at a time. And if we do this now, this is going to take care of a part of this section of the lake. And like I said, we could look at reconstructing this intersection, similar to the rest of the project, what we're looking at doing at Emerson Lane, what we're looking at doing there. It's going to cost a lot of money to do that, and we are going to have to spend a lot of money to just do what we're doing. We're looking at approximately half a million dollars for doing what we need to do on Emerson Lane. And then on top of that, to realign this intersection, you know, I was saying, you know, one twenty-five, one fifty, I mean, we could easily push this whole project into a million dollars if we have issues with land acquisition and what have you. So we're trying to keep this simple. And no action, you know, every action has a consequence and a result. So yes, there would be discontinuity. It would be safer probably for the kids and the bikers in that section too, you know, walking around through there versus through traffic. I hardly ever see anybody stop at the end of that road, because if you do stop, I have a hard time going again. I, but I think you all make valid points. I want to emphasize that this is not, the discontinuance of the road is not what we're saying is the answer to this problem. It's one part. We are looking at really addressing the other aspects of the drainage as well.
Sir, sir, our questions have to go to the moderator. If you want a personal conversation with Erin after the meeting, you can do that. But any questions have to be sent through the moderators, through the microphone, everybody at this meeting to hear.
So I think it's important to note that this work is, was started, that this project is a result of an enforcement action from the Department of Environmental Services. More excessive, I'm going to just kind of summarize it, but it's basically to deal with excess sediment. I also want to circle back to a comment regarding, you know, talks with DES, and I've been working with Robert Livingston at the DES for a long time on this. And after, you know, we've seen some comments from butters, I made a point of checking in with him yesterday before town meeting, and, you know, he wanted to make sure, you know, this is something, you know, I've been hired as the engineer today. The DES isn't telling us, and they never tell people, you know, necessarily what to do in prior designs, but they will say the problem that needs to be addressed. And we have support of the DES on this. You could decrease the sediment by paving over the road. So if you have pavement over the road, it's kind of like sealing that gravel in to an extent. We are looking at doing, holding that sediment in here with vegetation for that little section of this deep section of the road that is a problem for water quality, and it's also a problem for traffic safety. Thank you.
How's the question after this?
You have to come up to the mic.
What about public safety for people who vote? And then you're... What about public safety? Because everybody walks down Bradford Lane, okay, because they don't want to go down to Dam Site. What about, what should be there for public access if you close it, so we have people go there? That has not been explained. I walk that, my neighbors walk it, and everything else, but, you know, let's do it. What do we do?
Well, I'm thinking that, one, you're going to have to go to some select board meetings to talk about different solutions.
But, well, hold on. Is the DES going to, to Erin?
Erin, step up to the microphone. Thank you.
So I'm working with the select board and the road agent, and it's mostly been with the select board, and the DES is the governing authority. They're the governing body. So they are part of this as a review and enforcement body, but not necessarily the design.
Andrew Sylvester, is the fire chief here? Can you talk how this will affect them and their emergency vehicles and everything?
Is Chief Coolins still here?
He's skiing.
I think he's lost. Sir, go ahead.
Lock Lake, on Emerson Drive, Center Barnstead. I don't pretend to be a junior by any means. I'm, I deal with this problem every single day. It has not been addressed. I, over two years ago, I spoke to the road agent, I spoke to her, they were on Emerson Drive for over five hours, listening to the problems that I have on, that we have on that, they're well aware of the problems. These are not my problems. This runoff comes from whatever direction it's my property. It comes from the area they want to resolve, it comes from Emerson, it comes down Dam Site, it comes from behind my house in two different locations. This runoff is destroying my property. Lodge, it's destroying my driveway, it's undermining my driveway. No one is addressing this. I spoke to them over two years ago. No one got back to me addressing these issues, or what their plans are, was, well, they feel that the homeowners should be kicking in more money to maintain this and deal with the problem. That was two years ago. Nothing's been done. I bought a thirty thousand dollar tractor to try and deal with this, because I probably put two tons, I probably pulled two tons of sand out of the end of my driveway just so we could make our driveway usable.
Can I make a comment? So I think, and your comment saying nothing's been done, this entire town has paid taxes to raise and appropriate the money, the five hundred and eight thousand five hundred and four dollars that's going to be used to fix this issue. That money was completed as being raised last year. This allows, again, this article is strictly just this portion, this is not the rest of the repair. Your Emerson part is part of the upcoming repair, correct Erin? Yes. So it's not that, this is strictly just, we're talking about this damaged section right here, we're closing this portion of road. This is not the rest of the project. This is just a portion of the project.
How does this eliminate the runoff coming out of several?
So, sir, she said that this is a portion of the project. So this is a first step in the project, and there's probably going to be more phases to it. And my suggestion is that we keep on the backs of the select board to find out the next planned step of this project.
So like I said, we have five hundred and four thousand dollars approved of this project. Why is...
Andrew Sylvester, your vote.
And many of these people, I mean, I'm not the road agent, I don't have to deal with maintaining that section, but the reasons mostly that they're talking about are safety. It doesn't, it's not about runoff, it's about being able to maintain that area for traffic.
Well, it sounds as though there's more than one issue here, and that they're going to do this step.
But the problem is, the problem that you're talking about resolving here, eighty percent of the problem is people who've already said, comes from Emerson. Why are we not starting that?
So first of all, I want you to know that we did hear your issues, and we are working to address it. It has been taking a painfully long time to go through and raising the money and looking at what we want to do and working with the DES. And it is true also that a substantial part of the problem really is Emerson, and that is something that we want to do, and that is something that's part of what we're doing now. And what we need to do, though, to implement the entire project is, we have to address the runoff coming in all directions, and there is a heavy sediment load coming from this hill. I talked to Robert Livingston, and he said that he did not want it quoted at eighty to eighty-five percent because he had not done the hydraulic calculations, and he asked that I actually clarified that at the town meeting today. It is true that, yes, there is a problem on Emerson Lane, and that is something we're looking to resolve. We're going to have more money to work on that part if we're able to address this section as cost effectively as possible. So basically, we're looking at vegetating, abandoning this section of Dam Site Road. Seventy-five feet of Dam Site Road will no longer be driven on. It'll be covered with grass, basically. It'll be a lawn. The lawn's going to decrease the amount of sediment. The lawn's going to decrease the amount of sediment coming off site into the lake. The alternative to that would be to extend it, to extend the paving up to the end of dam site, paving that intersection. But it's going to be more than just putting pavement on the intersection. There are issues with the road alignment. We're going to get into a very costly road reconstruction project, which can't be done, but is going to just add expense to this project. And it could potentially delay the work that we would need to do on Emerson and the other parts because of everything else that needs to be done. So this is only one part of what we want to do. The majority of the work is on the drainage on Emerson.
Sir, you're done.
I'll get mine again.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pull the microphone around. Okay. You're in agreement that the majority of the issue is on Emerson? And it sounds as if we have the funds to get that project started. So to me, it's putting the cart before the horse by getting dam sites closed and vegetated before we try to fix the issue on Emerson. The biggest issue is Emerson, so we take the, this, this Warren article isn't even mentioning Emerson, it just says close dam site. So to me, it's just, great, we're closing the dam site, there's nothing in it that says anything about allocating the funds to do the drainage. Um, but, um, all due respect to you, the conversations I had with DES, I was told that he did not feel that closing off dam site was necessary. A previous road agent, when they were looking at the problem on Emerson, had said, maybe we should just close that road up there. So that was, you know, just sort of, you know, tongue in cheek, somebody had said that this went forward. He also said, Robert Livingston also told me, that he did not feel that putting in the seventy-five foot barrier of vegetation was going to alleviate the problem. So I'm just thinking the best use of the town's money is to fix the Emerson issues and, and, and then see how that, how much that is alleviating, or to see if the next step is, if we still need to do everything that's on dam site, since it is such a fraction of what the Emerson problem is.
And, and just to make a quick comment, um, in order to close any portion of a road in the town of Barren Spec, it has to come before the body. So the rest of the project, that money's already been raised and appropriated. That does not have to come before the body to spend the money. But in order to close a portion of a road for this project, it has to come before the body. Now, this is something that if, if you guys chose to wait, you can be waiting a full year. If you find out during that year that this shouldn't have been closed in the first place, you have now delayed that project by a year. So you please, you do need to take that into consideration.
I would, I would please get, it's going to take at least a year to get that project on Emerson completed. I could be wrong, I don't know, but the school.
That is, and again, Emerson is part of the project. This is another part of the project. And if you delay this, you could potentially be delaying the Emerson and the other sections by another year if it has to come before this body again.
If you're saying we already have the funds for Emerson, why would Emerson be delayed if we don't close dam site?
Because the recommendation from the, our engineer is to close dam site. I don't know about your discussion that you had with DES, that is between you and DES. Erin is stating that she has had a different conversation with Robert Livingston. He is not here right now, so she said, she said issue, but I'm telling you right now, in order to close dam site, if indeed it does need to be closed, if we do not address this now, it's going to put the project off for another year.
Let me ask this, Lori. If we don't close dam site, we're not able to do anything on Emerson?
I'll step up to the mic here.
If we do not close dam site, we're going to have to take a look at how we can implement the stormwater improvements on Emerson without, uh, without that work. And comprehensively, I would be concerned about not doing the project altogether and having this section of road that has washed out numerous times remaining exposed after the town is spending half a million dollars and potentially causing damage to the new drainage system that we're going to build. So we would be exposing the point of discharge. So where the water's going to be coming out, where the water's flowing out from Emerson is also where the water is flowing down the section of dam site that we want to close. If we choose, if, if we were to build out this stormwater management system for Emerson and we, we would leave this section alone, just leave it, leave it the sediment that it is, and we get a really bad storm and it damages our new infrastructure or causes an overloading, it's putting a strain on a new system that I think should be avoided. So we would really need to take a look at doing this project comprehensively. And frankly, $500,000 is not going to be enough to reconstruct that intersection. And it most likely would cause the project to be delayed. Thank you.
Just the last comment is that, um, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, the, the gentleman from DES did say that he felt that putting in stone check dams that were maintained properly should have taken care of this issue. So I don't know if the town has not maintained those properly, if they went and sold properly, but I still think, again, we should table shutting of dam site.
So I want to circle back, and there's a lot of talk about, you know, who said what. And we're talking a lot about somebody who's not here. And I've been working very closely with the town and Robert Livingston for five years. And there are some valid points being made. However, I think it's important to emphasize that some of these points are not reflective of the entire picture, of the entire conversation and the entire problem. And that's very important to understand, that the DES isn't supporting this. What Mr. Livingston did say, that he said, is that you could take care of the sediment by paving over the road, you could take care of the sediment by vegetating it. Most of the time, the DES would rather see vegetation over pavement, generally speaking. But this is, this is a question for, you know, the town to decide. It's a big decision, so thank you.
And Karen Montgomery, just to sum this up, when this Warren article was created, it was created for dam site road. We can, as a body, now change it to, you know, perform things on other roads. So please keep that in mind.
Hi, so I'm late again, we're on the drive. I guess, I guess my question mainly lies, it seems like a Band-Aid, nothing, to start with your absolute cheapest, less effective thing. And I'm concerned that you shut that road off and they get no longer any good for all of the people who live up the hill for me. Because I sympathize with them, they're right, twenty-eight is a blunt surface, especially at some summits. If you're going to shut this road off, then moving forward, you guys complete the work on it or start the work on Emerson. And now, we've shut that road off that didn't need to be shut off. We've made those people have to go up to twenty-eight just to get out of their driveways. It seems like a bad plan, like she said, put the cart before the horse, just because it wasn't running in the right order. And what I understand, the amount of work coming down may negate what you want to do on Emerson. The fact of the matter is, if you don't write on Emerson, what comes down the hill is not the problem. It's not, it should not interfere with fixing the main root of the problem, which should always be the first thing we fix, and then Band-Aid afterwards. I just think you guys are doing this out of order. And if anybody took time to short view, I know you know what I'm talking about, you fixed the main problem. And then if that needs to be shut down, I have no problem with it being shut down, only if it needs to. Shutting it down nature, the way you guys want to, and then say, well, now we can fix Emerson. It's the wrong order. And I understand the money difference, and you guys got to show some results quickly, but it's the wrong order and it's the wrong path. And you're going to shut down from emergency services, the school buses, and just general traffic. Access to the inner and outside of the community they brought their homes in. That's all.
And Rogers goes, um, this was a few points, a clarification. She just mentioned the bus, so with whatever you're going to be doing to this section, because those plow trucks, yeah, they're really big, and that section is difficult to plow. So you're, you're going to put in a turn, are you going to put in a turnaround section? That is happening. So there's enough room for a school bus to also turn around there, because there's a lot of kids on Danbury that need to get picked up by a school bus that can't walk out on twenty-eight, because even then, you know, the bus has got to go somewhere. And, yeah, I, I just, I'm a little concerned, I'm, I'm a little confused. We had an amendment, but now it sounds like Erin says no, you can amend that, which I believe is correct. You can't amend something that is done for a specific point. So can you, moderator, clarify that we can no longer speak to that amendment because?
Correct.
Could you mute?
The Warren article, the wording cannot be amended, so it can't change from dam site to Emerson.
Okay. So if we go ahead and we say yes to this, if the next step to then, I mean, is the money there already to get started on Emerson? To, to help that runoff? I mean, we all know that Lock Lake is just a big runoff. I mean, it's going to be filling itself in sooner or later here, you know? So is there a plan in place and money appropriated already to fix or start to fix that problem at Emerson? Because that does seem to be the bigger problem than dam site. Closing dam site is going to be an inconvenience, you know? It's going to be an inconvenience for me, because I'm on this side of the lake, my daughter's on the other side. You know, but I'll manage, as long as the safety of being able, being able to turn around there. I mean, I always thought you should put a stump sign at the end of Danbury. You know, the police need to really work on that intersection with the amount of people at that house on the corner that, that, there's a lot of parking that happens there. And that's happening, why you can't see what's coming down if, uh, Danbury, if you try to go up dam site. But is the money appropriated now to get started with the Emerson Drive fix? Because this is a small, this is, this is a little fix. This isn't, this isn't going to help the, the bigger picture. And then I'd like to call a question after this. I'm done. Thank you.
So I just wanted to answer the question that, yes, we do have the funds to move forward, to work on, to work on Emerson Lane. In order to know exactly what we're going to do and to finalize the design and, and secure the permits, again, it's going, we need to know what we're doing on dam site. It's true, this, this is a little part of the problem, and, um, there, there's, there's a lot going on here. I think that, uh, something that I mentioned, but hasn't been emphasized, but brought up with the cars, is there's an issue with the right of way here too. So the, this orange line is the edge of the town ownership, and it goes right through the middle of the road. So we have to work with this landowner. Where they're parking on the side of the road is all on their property right here on dam site. So there's, there's, there's an other, there's other issues at play that add to the cost of redoing this intersection. So we're really trying to look at how can, how can we address this as simply as possible. And I do emphasize that with the loss of connectivity, and we'll do everything we can to maintain a limited pedestrian and, and as possible.
Okay, so the question has been called. I haven't gotten an answer to whether we are, when we close this road, there is going to be a turnaround there so that the bus and the, the plows are able to, because without that, you can't close that road. The answer is yes, we have to have a turnaround. Yes, we have to, so it's going to be done. Yes, it's going to be done. That's what I want to hear. That as soon as you start to fill in that seventy-five feet, there is also going to be a turnaround created at the same time.
When she first, when she presented it, she said there was a turnaround?
She did, but she didn't have to say it was being created at, at the same time that they were filling this in. So I just, I just need to clear.
Okay, so, so to clarify, we won't, we can't close a road without a turnaround, so yes.
Okay, so the question has been called, is there a second on that? I'm shocked about a second. All those in favor to call the question, but let Mr. Sylvester speak? Please say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed? Okay.
Angel Sylvester, again, this Warren article just allows to that section of road to be discontinued. Doesn't mean they're going to start there first. They can start at Emerson first. Doesn't mean they are. Second, you, you know, they were talking about dump trucks that go off the road and potentially roll over. There's $250,000 right there if one goes over. So you guys talk about cost all the time, you got to think about that.
Thank you. So Article 30, all those in favor of Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, Article 30, please say no.
No.
Sound really, really close. So I'm going to have the supervisor to recount that.
Think about if it was your road, would you want to close?
Okay, all those in favor of Article 30, please raise your card.
Think if it was your road. How would you feel if it was your road being shut off, your access? Seriously, people.
Okay, you can put your cards down. Okay, the people on this side, though, please raise your cards and do everything that a hard. You all set? Okay. All those who oppose Article 30, please raise your cards.
It'll be lost.
Was there a question?
So I will tell you something really loud. So Article 30, yes sixty-five, no thirty-five, the article passes as written. Article 31, shall the town readopt the option of veterans' tax credit in accordance with RSA 72:28 Roman numeral II for an annual tax credit on residential property of $500? Majority vote required. Article has been moved in negative, it's ready to discussion. Okay, all those in favor of Article 31, please say yes.
Yes.
I hope you guys pay any attention. Anybody who opposes Article 31, please say no. Article 31 passes as written. Article 32, shall the town readopt the all veterans' tax credit in accordance with RSA 72:28-B for an annual tax credit on residential property, which shall be equal to the same amount as the standard veterans' tax credit voted by town under RSA 72:28? I'm just reading what's written here, I think it should be Roman numeral II. Recommended by Selectmen 5 to 0, majority vote required. What is your pleasure? Article has been moved in- Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of Article 32, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, Article 32 passes as written. Article 33, we're getting there, guys. To see if the town will vote for due to RSA 31:39, comma, 1, and a peremptive to repeal in its entirety the noise ordinance adopted by the 1990 Barnstead Town Meeting and replace it with a new noise ordinance which prohibits specific unnecessary noise from motor vehicles from electronically amplified sound systems and misuse of power braking accelerations, deceleration, and racing of engines in non-emergency situations. Prohibits nighttime operation or use of construction equipment, tools, and vehicles, and fireworks or cannons. Prohibits nighttime use of radios, television, photographs, instruments, and amplifiers at a volume clearly audible at the property boundary. Exempt from these prohibitions certain safety, emergency sound signals, equipment, and vehicles, including public and private snow removals. Exempt governmental and utility emergency work. Exempt municipal maintenance work where others have been notified. Exempt noise from certain temporarily permitted or licensed activities. Exempt certain balance and charge. Exempt the unamplified human voice and provide for police warning and penalties at $100 per violation for individuals and $500 for any other person for violation. Recommended by selectmen 5 to 0. What is your pleasure? The article has been moved and seconded, and I already see a line.
Okay, Kurt. First thing I do want to say, and I appreciate that there is a committee put together to discuss this. And I'm not necessarily against noise ordinance, but I think that there's additional work that needs to be done in order to have this be effective. And I do have a question and then a statement, if that's okay. My question is, reading this Warren article, is my understanding that the entire noise ordinance was posted on the town website underneath news and announcements? Is that accurate? That's the one, that is, I'm making sure that I reviewed the correct ordinance in its entirety. Yes. Thank you, thank you. So, so policy's tough, right? Because I can see that some people are experiencing some challenges around people being noisy and not having any recourse to protect that, right? Which is really important, it's an important thing. When you write a policy, it's really important to actually put yourself in the shoes of each person who may be experiencing that policy. So not only do you have to take the perspective of the person who's experiencing that noise, you also have to take the perspective of the person who's been accused of making that noise. You also have to take the perspective of the person who has been unfairly accused of making that noise. And when I put myself into that person's perspective, that's where I experience the challenges. Specifically, I think that there's a lack of definitions within the noise ordinance. I think additional definitions would be really, really helpful. Specifically around what qualifies as... There's no measurement for what is too noisy. There's a lot of descriptors in there around how it can bother someone, but what that means is, is that the noise just has to bother someone in order for this noise ordinance to take effect, right? Within the other constraints around time and things like that. So that's one thing, right? That's really challenging. Because that means hypothetically that like, a person could be walking by, and this is an extreme situation. A person that doesn't like the overwatch could be walking by my home and decide to make a complaint around the noise that I'm making at 8:00 AM on a Sunday where I live at the end of a dirt road, right? And that's, this noise ordinance doesn't necessarily have to help for that. And I feel like there's also, so there's a lack of definitions on what constitutes noise and what doesn't. There's a lack of definition on how you measure that and how you wouldn't. I also think... I got distracted by the train myself. Oh, Lord. Then there's also stuff like, there's actual language in there if you read the ordinance about how it can take effect if someone reasonably, which might be a typo, reasonably annoys your repose. What does that mean? I'm cherry picking a little, I'm cherry picking, right? People should know that. I'm choosing those words in the ordinance. I'm kind of cherry picking. But if we can't necessarily define that, then that's a problem. The other thing that I want to identify is that there's no, there's no language in there around farming, around businesses, around other stuff like that. It's just kind of a blanket ordinance. So again, if you have a problem because there's a business being run where their operating hours are outside of the hours in this ordinance, that's gonna be a problem and that person can reasonably make a complaint and then be fined, right? The other thing is that there's some definitions around like unnecessary vehicle noise. What is unnecessary? What does that mean, right? So not only, a policy or an ordinance in this case needs to protect the people who are experiencing the noise, but it also needs to protect the people who are being accused of making the noise, right? And so that's what I would encourage this committee to take back. I can't reasonably vote for this the way that it's written here with due respect to that committee and the time to split.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark. On behalf of my wife, I would just deliver on the cable route.
We have your last name, please.
Sillijin. S L J U R. I am not against noise, but my wife is not against noise. That's not really the problem. Everyone who here probably have young kids who've had mini bikes, four-wheelers and so forth, no problems. We have neighbors, they operate all the time with four-wheelers and mini bikes and so forth. I'm not against noise. We sit out front of our house, Fourth of July, listening to fireworks. We have a strenuous circumstances next to us where the noise is really detrimental. It's physical and mentally disturbing. It's drone bikes and so forth that are running against our property all day from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock at night. Like I said, we have nothing against noise in this town. I hope everybody enjoys it. But we need a mechanism to control this type of situation. And we don't have that right now. And hopefully, the new noise ordinance that the town is proposing will pick up a lot of it. But like the previous speakers have said, we need more definitions. All noise, okay, we need definitions. Mini bikes, drone hops. You know, what constitutes a violation of noise ordinance? And that's my argument. So like I said, I'm not against noise ordinance. And I hope none of these people are able to. The town definitely does need a mechanism to control a lot of this stuff wrong. Thank you for your time.
Scott Michon?
I just wanted people to know that there is an existing noise ordinance, and I'll try to settle repealing it. And when I read the existing noise ordinance, although there's no definitions of time and that nature, it seems to speak to some general common sense. You're making noise in your property that is endangering the welfare of your neighbor, you know, causing undue stress, you know, a policy interrupting your peace and quiet and doing that nature. That there is mechanisms in that today. But the gentleman who just spoke, the new noise ordinance has some time restrictions there. And it sounds like a lot of the noise that's being made is during the times where that noise would be allowed by proposed now. Whereas the existing noise ordinance kind of says, hey, it's unreasonable. You know, so somebody's out on Wednesday and they have a band relief day on Saturday night. They finish up at midnight. Probably in a toddler, they do it every night of the week, you know. And it kind of seems like some of what's going on is rising to that level. And something certainly should be done. But I don't know that this noise ordinance that he presented today, this all that, I don't think exists. Yeah, it's named mine, generally fifty-one. Actually, still the definition. I do think it needs toughening. And Kurt was pointing out there as well that we need to tickle up the language and make sure that we preserve the traditions in our town and we give the ability to work on it, to folks to work there. And my concern is that we try to kind of...
I don't know.
Several different ordinance brought forward that allow such a direction. It makes it more difficult for landowners to rent their property, put an RV on it, enjoy their property. And if we don't allow landowners to recreate on the land and make living from the land, then it goes to developers. Because there's really, landowners are gonna basically sell. You know, it's frustrating that kind of didn't even turn when you're trying to develop a farm business or whether you're trying to do forestry or lumber or whatever it is. It seems that there are barricades and so forth that we put in front of that. However, I do think that we are responsible to be good neighbors. And I do think for the most part, most of us are in our common sense. And if we're doing something that damages the neighbor's ability to enjoy their own property, I think both of us are reasonable enough to accommodate that, to do the right thing. And so there's two things that I don't see on this pre-revealed version, even as I was posted online. One was farm operations exempt. So I just wanted to confirm that in this existing noise ordinance, that is still a piece?
No.
Yes, it is. Great, thank you. It says exempt by state or federal law. I don't know that the farm RSA, or the state, actually exempts noise. I think it defines where a farm is and defines what a farm really is. But I don't know that it exempts it. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I would think that would be an area that would probably need some clarification. The other is the times. I don't know if people know what the times are represented. It's basically, I'm going by memory, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day of the week except Friday and Saturday. And Sunday, you can't make a noise until 10:00 AM. A lot of people are trying to establish farms in town. That's a busy part of the farm work schedule because on a Sunday morning, especially if you're trying to work a full-time or part-time job, it's supposed to be exempt. So I'm also against this noise ordinance and keeping the existing noise ordinance until these issues can be addressed. However, I would like to make an amendment to the noise ordinance to be vetted in the past. Can I do that? Can't amend the noise ordinance at all. It has to be the past if they are threatened. So I would like to revise the times to basically say... So instead of between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, Monday through Thursday, and then 10:00 AM on Sunday, we, just those times, we just say between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM on Monday through Sunday.
So we have an amendment on the floor. Is there a second to this amendment? No. So it's a method of time. So that seven days a week, it is quiet from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
I have a second.
I'm good. Oh, second. So I'm gonna stretch all of this. Once everybody speaks, I don't know if you're gonna hold off here and then come back up or not, or... I'm just gonna let everybody speak and then I'll speak to it. And we can go from there, if that's okay?
At White, one in the center of Barnstead Road community. I have, I'm in complete support of a noise ordinance. I would like one that actually addresses the issue hip-hop way. And I think the updated one is trying to. I think a 11:00, as the gentleman just mentioned, Monday through Sunday is pretty excessive because some of us get up at 4:30 in the morning to go to work. That's my major complaint is they're allowed to do this until 10... It doesn't matter what night of the week it is, until 10:00 at night. I go to bed at 8:30 most nights because I have to be up to 4:30 in the morning. Now, that's my choice, I understand that. But the problem is, repeatedly throughout the summer, fireworks are allowed to go on until midnight, 1:00 randomly. We have no control over it. We can't do anything about it. We can call and complain it. And by the time, I'm not gonna, you cut it off. But by the time Barnstead least can get there, most people have gone to bed. But the next week, or the next night, at 12:30 at night, someone is launching fireworks off again. And people follow the same watch, and it's not. It's every single night. I don't know how to address it. I think we leave here. Widening the hours of noise is just gonna cause more problems. At least now, usually by midnight, people have settled in, even on the weekend, and it's stopped with the fireworks, except the occasional whoopee. If they allow it to go until 11:00 every night of the week, it's not gonna fly that.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Preston, North Barnstead Road. There seems to be two different problems here. One seems to be off-lane where the houses are very close together. And there's an awful lot of litter that goes on there. And there's obviously a lot more noise. The other problem is that people tend to let off fireworks at odd times. I think we should limit the fireworks to Holly Hills and to special occasions. But I think the ordinance that we have now is pretty good. And ultimately, I think we forgot to talk to each other. I think we ought to not legislate everything, but go and visit your neighbor and talk to them. Put down your phones and start to be friends again. It used to be like you could go to a neighbor and discuss a problem. Please, people, let's get back to that. Thank you.
Mary Winslow, North Barnstead Road. Mr. Madden, is that your last name? I was gonna ask the select board who voted five to zero in favor of this, if you would weigh in on why that is. Why you voted in favor of it? If you would speak to that, for me, please. Thank you.
Going forward, because the old ordinance is 33 years old. A lot of things have changed, times have changed, equipment has changed, noise has changed. And we put a committee on this, all of this, now, before you speak, if you don't mind. We put a committee together that I put together basically with people from different parts of the community. Because this is not just a Lock Lake issue, by far. And before we met, and we met, we only got to meet a few times. It was high scheduling with the five or six people I had. And I went out and spoke to people. People for and people against. And the people for this noise ordinance, they understand. People, as you'll see on social media, people are taking our rights away. You think the police department is gonna be riding around in the bear cap giving out tickets? None of this is true. They have more important things to do. And we had to put a little bite into this because there are people that are abusing it. As Kathy said, if neighbors could talk to each other and show a little more respect, we wouldn't probably even be in this issue, be dealing with it. But everybody doesn't have respect like most of us do. If my neighbor has a problem with something I'm doing, I'm gonna change it for them because I respect them. Most people in this room probably would. But unfortunately, everybody's not like that. I spoke to a gentleman, doesn't mind fireworks one bit, but he had to listen to them from 11:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. And his wife couldn't even hear the television set. They're nowhere near Lock Lake. But that's a viable issue. And he called the police one time, the police went up and spoke to the people and left. And 10 minutes after they left, the fireworks were going off again. I spoke to Mr. Sillijin many times about their issue over there. What he did leave out is they bought a piece of property to retire here in Barnstead to make it their home and stay here. And the homeowner next door sold the property and now it's become an enduro park. And this goes on from...
And this goes on from Friday night after work till Sunday night, when everybody leaves the property. People, someone that was against this, I told them these stories and they kind of started to understand. But everybody doesn't make a deal all of this. But I wanted to hear, I heard people, well, we don't need noise, I have rights and I'm gonna do what I want. I say, you're gonna, that person next door has an ill family member, and you're gonna be running your lawn mower at 6:00 in the morning when you know they're ill? And he said, no. I go, that's what we're talking about. They're not gonna go out at 7:00 on a Sunday morning trolling and using your lawn mower and give you a ticket. It's not gonna happen. This is if it's something ongoing, something like we said, ridiculous, just running a chainsaw at 3:00 in the morning. And then you have, not only the person, the complaint, you're gonna have the police department using their judgment on this. They'll speak to them. If you can't speak to them, because, believe me, unfortunately, they will speak to people, neighbors will try to speak to a neighbor to alleviate the issue, and they might get fingered, they might get told where to go, and then just do it even worse afterwards. And unfortunately, that's what this is all about, to try to update. The gentleman, gentleman sitting in his driveway, and he's just running that base in his car all day long, all day in his driveway. People can't sleep, people can't, you know, whatever, they weren't calm either. Things like this, that's where the decedents come in, and the noise with the motor vehicles. So, there is no perfect answer there. I think we all pretty sure of that, and unfortunately, we don't have that 100% of people that are gonna respect each other. Most of us can do that, and that would be great, and that would probably work most of the time. The police coming out, he's gonna come out and give out tickets and let's get money, and it's to try to put a second level of reasoning with these people and, you know, how about if you could do theirs, or, look more respectful to your neighbor, we don't wanna give you a ticket, there's no one here for it. And they leave, now, continues again 10 minutes later. We had to have a little bite in this, we have to be able to do something to respect everybody. I know people think their rights are being taken away, and they're not. And farming, I think, this is a farming community. If someone has a complaint about the farming, you know, really, you shouldn't have moved there. I don't think the farming exists, I think the farming existed before you. And everybody understands that, and that's normal and viable, that's, we understand that. So, I think that we did need to make some changes, because I did go out and speak to people before even the committee met, and we didn't make a lot of changes. As Scott spoke to, changing it to every morning like that, later at night, the issues in Lock Lake with the fireworks and things, I think everybody's pretty aware of what that is. People rent their homes out, we have year-round residents, people rent their homes out, and people come in for the week, and it's their vacation, they wanna party. And things are going on until 2, 3:00 in the morning, and then the resident is, you know, they gotta go to work in the morning, and this is difficult on them. And so, I think another way to attack that is the homeowners, the renter, and see what we can do there and try to find some kind of regulations on that. I know another gentleman, Tony, he rents his place up, and he never has a problem with his neighbors or his place, because his rent is a little high, so he's getting a little higher class, and people come in, they do have respect. I don't know if that's gonna turn up. Also, with the committee, we discussed doing this possibly on a yearly or bi-yearly situation, sitting down as things arise, and we know that there's holes in this. But reworking it and seeing what better ideas we can come up with, and add or subtract or, just to know that so it doesn't go 33 years, because exactly what my point is, so... I think we have issues all over town, and we're trying to address it best we can, and that's why I voted for her.
Barbara Con, 12 White Road, thank you, Madam Moderator. I do have a question. It says here, farm operations exempt from local noise regulations. Where in here does it spell the exemptions for farm operations? I don't see any.
Yeah, it's under exemption. I'm looking at what's on your website.
It's stating federal law, so I think you would know probably better than we would of the state law would be.
They exceed to local noise ordinance at current time, so farm operations would, we have to adhere to what this says. So, for that one's in a line, that's all we opposed to this.
Hi, I'm Darryl O'Leary, I live on Shepherd Road. Sometimes I think it's hell on that road, and I'm wondering if I've ever raced that. But you know, yeah, there's a lot more people living in this town, and a lot of people move out from suburban areas, and they think that this is a place where it's like Yahoo, you can just have a lot of time if we want to. And sometimes, you know, people get that out of their system. But, you know, I think each young man's pride, when people are disturbing other people, I think they know pretty right well that they are. And the only way I can say that is because every week, in the mail, and the flyers I get is, there's a flyer in there for hearing aids. My work is always my ear. Every time I'm doing something with my chainsaw or anything, if I don't have hearing protectors, I'll even get tortified and shove it in there. And it is effective. But, yeah, this is a hard one for you guys, because, I don't know if you put that in front of your town lawyer, because he might have found this law is in subtle language? Because if you wanna enforce this law, it's too lengthy, it gets too complicated. A lot of it has to do with just civility with people. And then, and you know, we don't listen on the police, we're just giving them another hard job to do, because you're dealing with people that are just beginning. And sometimes, you know, a young person's doing the noise thing. My brother did all that stuff. I was kind of a quiet person, but, except for we liked the guitar, but I did that. So, but anyway, I don't know whether to say we should vote for this ordinance, because it doesn't have specifics in the language. I know the original noise ordinance that we had is that there was supposed to be no noise after 11:00 PM. And I know that's not followed through. And there are other things going on with this loudness, and folks after this last election, and they think that somehow they're gonna take back this country. And I don't know what they're talking about, because we have the best country in the world when it comes to freedoms, but we have to have responsibility to one another and realize that that's your responsibility, and you should just be following through that. It's an unwritten law. So, yeah, that's what I wanted to say. I don't know if the language is suited up, or what needs to be done. It's pretty much up to people, getting along as Norbert says, what others have said. I appreciate it pretty much, you know, this club.
I may be reiterating a few things, but I, my name is Gunnar Stolberg, I live on George Pittman Drive. And I looked at this and it says, volume clearly audible at the boundary of a property. And it's, that's totally subjective, isn't it? I mean, how, you can't even, you know, like, how can you get a police officer, they go, I could put a transistor radio on my front porch, and I could hear it probably good over my boundary, you know? It's like, you know, so, anyhow, it's, I think it's got to do with the kind of like the diversity, like Kathy said about, you know, a lot of us live in spacious properties, whereas, you know, in Lock Lake, it's a congested area, so that if somebody, you know, like, makes noise, you know, it's right in your face. So, they, you know, anyway, so, why does Boonie Barnstead have to deal with the same kind of rules that, you know, constrictive Barnstead has? So I'm wondering, doesn't Lock Lake have their own regulations? I mean, and, you know, it's like, maybe the Lock Lake Association or whatever kind of organization they have could somehow get their own noise regulations, where they have rental agreements, if you're gonna rent your property, your guys can't just make all this noise all the time and expect everybody to be happy? I, you know, I don't. So, I'm just making a suggestion, that maybe it's not up to the Barnstead laws to regulate something that maybe Lock Lake can do on their own, that's all.
Thank you.
I'm a 33, I know we all wanna get out of here, I just wanted to address left and right and say, I have great respect for everything you just said, I agree. And I think where we might not disagree is that this ordinance, the language in this ordinance, currently would solve most of our problems, right? So, with regard to the person last this time, you know, this poor gentleman out of this dirt bikes, that's during the presented hours. And the existing ordinance has some teeth in it, to say, if you're doing those things and the police come and board here, they can come back and try again. I guess the question is, why haven't they done that under the existing ordinance? And at this point in time, I think it's great, this committee, I encourage them to continue working towards it, but at this time, I don't think this ordinance is ready for prime time. And I would recommend that we hold no on, let the existing ordinance continue until that which time that this matters to be addressed. Thank you.
I agree with him, Sharon Gilbert, and I motion to call a question.
All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Article 33, all those in favor of Article 33, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed Article 33, please say no.
No.
And those have it. Come back next year. Article 34. This instant town will vote to approve the annual lease agreement between the town and bus company for the purpose of leasing the town-owned land until France deploys to the bus company to allow the parking of company's school buses. The bus company pays approximately $136 in property taxes on that portion of the property that is used, recommended by selectmen back to zero, what is your question? Article, I move to second, under any questions? All those in favor of Article 35, no, 34, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Article passes as written. Okay, we're almost at the end, you guys. Article 35. The C of the municipality will vote to raise and appropriate to budget committee's recommended sum of $4,797,178 for general municipal operation. This article does not include appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, majority vote required.
Madam Moderator, move the article up.
Second.
Who seconded that? Are there any comments from the floor?
Mary Clark. I would just ask to add $2,000 to the bus line budget for our office. We've been experiencing a lot of new residents. We've been averaging 215 more registrations a year. Our dog licenses in the past few years is almost 400. We, at the budget with the selectmen, it was agreed of a sum of $10,000, a little over $10,000, but the committee turned it down to $8,000. So, I've been asking to throw the $2,000, basically, for we'd be able to, because I'm only working one day a week now, to make coverage for conferences and vacations. So, we would have to dispose the office for two weeks a day, twelve of the conference, where I'm only working one day a week, and basically to cover vacations and things like that. So I just wanted to make the amendment to add $2,000 to the operating budget to $4,799,178. Thank you.
Do I have a second to that amendment?
I second it.
What's your name?
Steven Kelly, Peter Maro.
How do you spell your last name?
K-E-L-L-Y.
It's for the record, so I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
And I could make you come up to the mic.
I can do that if you want.
Hi, I'm a former budget lead. So I just wanted to clarify, the budget committee did not cut that money. For my records, it was the board of selectmen who cut that money down by $2,000. I just wanna confirm that, that it was not the budget committee that did that.
That is correct. It was initially budgeted at maybe 520 hours, and after the town administrator went through all of the hours for coverage and vacations, she came up with a number of 400 hours, which is what is included in the budget. Again, it's a new position. We've always had two full-time. Last year, it was split between, it was two part-time positions, now we've created one full-time, so this is actually a new position. And we have asked to take a look and see what happens this year, so we can get an accurate count of what hours are actually going to be needed, but town administrator and the select board is comfortable with 400 hours.
Okay, any other comments on the amendment? All those in favor of amending the budget to $4,799,178, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. But now, we begin to vote on budgets. So the operating budget now is $4,799,178. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Hi, I would like to restrict reconsideration of Articles 29 to 35, please.
Have a second. Sheller, I second it. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Articles 29 to 35, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Article 36, to trend out any other business. Oh, this do means we would like to come to the microphone.
I'm just kidding. You gotta get back.
I think I made a simple recommendation for the selectmen, you know, late in the season, or late in the season, it would be very, very helpful to reduce the time in the competition with the selectmen that afford a special appropriation, making certain, if you know what the issue is, to locate and block time and force it to date. And most importantly though, is that those, there should be a report in the town annual report to explain the purpose and the reasons behind the selectmen are favored, over again. This would have been, this would have been very helpful in the noise ordinance, but it would also have been very helpful per its file.
Mr. Leester, you had permission to talk about the mill oil, but not anything else.
Hi, I'm Cardigan. I just want to, on behalf of the Barnes and Fields industry, like for everybody who generously supported us throughout the specific year that we have, we have a back row, we have a rotation, we are now located... We are now located down in the business side of Echo Street. We are operating on a skeleton crew, and we are doing appointments. So please reach out if you need to do it. And once again, thank you all who have supported us in helping make that move possible.
Okay, so, any other business? All those in favor of journey at 2:06, please say aye.